I signed mine.
We're good here.
We'll go ahead and call the budget meeting to order. Amber, can we have a real call please?
Peterson, Wiefenbach, Davis, Hattcock, Kroger, Costello, Quaker, Wa, Brown, Mason. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. First one on the budget hearings this afternoon is the CBB. You've got to put up with this all the time then, don't you?
Yeah.
For the benefit of the council, I'm not going to bring this one up on the screen just because it's a flat dollar amount for $775,000 and it's the same dollar amount as we have for 2009. Something that you need to be aware of. They get 25% of our BBB tax, so if our BBB comes in higher and where they would get additional money, they, we would have to do a supplement for that because that is in our ordinance that they get that money.
Michelle, everybody's been up at the podium there. That works for you.
This one?
Yes. Good afternoon. Glad to be here again. Thank you again, all of you, for the support you have given the Convention and Visitors Bureau for many, many years. And as Pauline said, it's changed a little bit this year, but what I'd like to do is, if I could briefly, go through the packet, just some of the things that are in the packet and with a very brief explanation. And we'll start with, in your packet on the right-hand side is the budget request. After many, many years of the council suggesting that the hospitality and tourism industry step up to the plate and find some of your own money, the CBB did that. In March of 2006, we all worked very hard to implement a bid tax, a business improvement district tax, with the hotels in Rapid City. That is a $2 per room per night tax that is collected by the hotels. It comes to the city for administrative purposes, and then it comes over to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for marketing purposes only. 100% of that tax must be used for marketing. So you will see that in the budget request, under bid, we have, we are hoping to raise $1.3 million under the bid. The CBB budget, we are requesting $775,000. And as Pauline mentioned, that is the minimum amount from the BBB tax that we will receive. But in our contract, we do, it was stated in 2007 that we would receive 25% of whatever comes in under the BBB tax. So we can go through that a little, in a little more detail if you'd like, but if I could just go through a couple of the other things in the packet, I would appreciate it. The next page that you should have, or packet that you should have, is the actual 2010-2011 marketing plan for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This basically describes the CBB's perspective, our mission statement. It talks about the staff that we have in place, our board of directors. We actually have two board of directors, a CBB board and a bid board of directors. It mentions the partnerships. We have convention stats and a marketing plan. So again, I'm not going to go through all of this with you, but if you hopefully have time someday to take a look at this, it will tell you just about everything you've ever wanted to know about the CBB and our marketing plans and what we do. The next page that you'll see in your packet is our bid room occupancy. And this is the one with the graph, just so you all, we're all on the same page. This shows the annual average and monthly increases year to year. And if you'll look on this chart, under June, the bottom line under June, it says 4.61%. That means our bid occupancy tax that I just talked about has increased this month over last year by 4.61%. You'll also see that every month this year has been an increase of at least 2.95%, up to 5.16% every single month. That includes January, February, March. Those are, those are some pretty bleak months at times in Rapid City for conventions and leisure. But this bid room tax has increased every month for us. So the total dollars that we received in a calendar year in 2009 was $1,180,000. If you had take a look at the next two, I think it's two sheets, two sheets, these are what we call our dashboards. We needed to actually set a benchmark. We had to really observe the marketing strategy efforts that we're using with this 1.2 million approximately dollars that we, that we market with. And so we have begun to show accountability with everything we've done. So you'll see on this, the first page of dashboards, you'll see that our Rapid City inquiries, of course, our downloaded guides are increasing more and more each year. It used to be that we would send approximately 20,000 visitor guides out every year. Well, of course, now they're just going to the website and they're downloading these guides. You'll see under the 2010 Rapid City sales with Black Hills Center Reservations, BHCR, our sales have increased every month, again, year-to-date, from '08 to, or '09 to '10. On the second page of those dashboards, you'll see the BBB tax receipts. And the mayor and I have talked about this a couple of times. We're not sure why the BBB receipts were down in May and June. We have no idea because everything else is up. Our bid room taxes are up, sales taxes are up. It absolutely makes no sense that this BBB tax is not up in May and June. But if you'll take a look at every other month, again, the BBB tax is up every month over last year. The next sheet that I have for you is our convention and event statistics. And people like Gary Brown and Dave Davis have seen this for 20-some years, Gary especially. We actually started this in 1980 and we have not stopped. But these are the number of conventions and events that we know that we have helped bring into Rapid City, or at least we've been contacted and worked with the hotels to bring these events in. So you'll see in 2009, we had a total of 386 conventions and events with approximately 353,000 attendees. And the formula that we use, we actually get this formula from our umbrella organization, Destination Marketing Association International. And this shows that for an estimated direct spending, we don't use a multiplier anymore, a direct spending for a convention for three days in 2009, Rapid City saw a total of about $186 million. And that's just conventions and events. That does not even include tourism. And the last packet of paper you have is the quarterly report. And we provide all of you with this each quarter. And it basically just tells you what we do every single day to keep busy and to keep those marketing dollars out there. So at this point, I think I'll stop. Of course, the rest of the information in your packets are all of the brochures that we produce at the CBB. Visitor guides, convention meeting planners, motor coach guides, tour planner guides, convention services that we provide, all free of charge, et cetera, et cetera. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions for Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you seeing, you know, you, one thing that the Chamber and the CBB and the city is great at doing is putting out these different pamphlets and the colors and all that. Are you seeing kind of a decrease at all as people are, are they using more online, bringing their own stuff down then, for sure?
Absolutely. Our marketing efforts go, I'm not going to say daily, but monthly, we're, we're moving more towards internet and online, social media, everything out there. We are seeing a lot fewer requests and needs for the printed materials. We won't stop doing those, but they're certainly being cut back.
Should help your costs a little.
It will.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Michelle? If not, thank you. You got to buy easy.
I did.
Oh, the mayor has a comment here.
Oh, dear. Here we go. There we go.
Well, first of all, we have some new council members, so I think it's important to give a little bit of a history lesson with the CBB. And the CBB came to us a number of years ago. And the request was to get additional funding in an effort to really jumpstart and actually promote Rapid City, not only through tourism, but also through the convention business. And the city council at the time, is that five years ago, six years ago?
2002, actually, 2001 we started.
Wow. Okay, so nine years ago. And so the city council at the time, and I think, I think, I know Ron Kroger, he's been here forever. Sam, I think you were, no, you were this before? Okay. So I guess it's just Ron and I were on the council and we thought it was a good idea. And the thing that I appreciate so much is the fact that Michelle and I started talking about this three years ago, and the fact that they have grown the industry so much. And keep in mind, they get 25% of the, of the triple B tax. They've gotten to the point now where this year, we finally reached a threshold where they are receiving absolutely no general fund dollars. As a matter of fact, anything, anything that they get out of that 25%, which is going to be well above the dollar amount, is actually goes straight to the CBB for promotion. So, you know, I can't say enough. And of course, I'm a little bit biased because I used to chair CBB, but, but I know Gary and Dave, you've all been involved in CBB. What a wonderful organization and what a tremendous effort by staff and also their board. So, thank you for not taking our money.
Thank you.
Oh, you're going to take that back?
I will. I've got all sorts of notes that you don't need to see.
Oh, Sam has, Michelle, Sam has a question.
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Michelle, Sam has a question for you.
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle. Just a quick question. What is the brief history of the dollar amount that, that your organization was getting from general fund?
It began in 2001, again, at $135,761. It continued until this past year, the highest amount. It continued to go up a little bit each year. The next year was 149, 163. The highest amount was in 2004. We received $210,922. From that time on, it took a deep dive to 137, 141. And then, three years ago, we started receiving the $75,000 for two years. And last year, we received $56,250. We still get $23,000?
Well, no.
Oh.
Let me jump right here.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Let me just real quickly explain actually how this works. Is that we actually specifically set a budget item, a line item with a dollar amount. And if the, the triple B is below that threshold, then the city will make up the difference. Once they hit that threshold, and it's 775 this year, I'm going off memory.
I'm sorry.
750 or, 775.
Yes, 775.
And once they hit that 775, which is their 25% of the triple B, then we're completely out of the equation. All of it actually is coming from the triple B. And we are going to, I believe, hit that this year. So, yep. So that's why there's been fluctuation, is the fact that we guarantee them a specific dollar amount. And if they fall short of that in their collections of triple B, then we make up the difference. But this year, and as a matter of fact, I think we predicted this year, didn't we?
We did.
We did. So we should be, they should be all on their own, but from this point on.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's my advice.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next one is the chamber.
Hello. My name is Leah Green. I'm with New Rushmore Radio here in Rapid City. And I'm your incoming chair, as our current chair is Al Reiman with Black Hills Harley-Davidson. And he's more than a little busy today. So, first thing I want to say is thank you and thank you for everything you do for the city. My two partners here, Scott Seifert and Pat Mackelgun, are handing out some information for you. We basically have the same mission and we work as partners with the city council to make our city the best place possible to work, live, and raise our family. Our membership is made up, it's about 1,150 members, and it's made up primarily of small businesses. 80% have under 10 employees. Our mission is to retain the big corporation, as well as nurture and grow small businesses. We provide services that simply a lot of businesses, a lot of small businesses cannot afford to do so. We function as frontline for our city. The chamber is where people call when they're considering moving here, when they're considering moving their business here, their family, and to find out what is happening in our community. Some of the ways we partner with you all in the past, and of course, in the future, include mayoral debates, city council debates, Cracker Barrels. And we back issues, not candidates. So we've done some issue forums, like the couple, like we've done a couple of healthcare forums, updates on the Heartland Express, and also the Theodore Roosevelt Express, which is the northern part of that. We've done work with the Black Hills Business Council, national, excuse me, regional legislative issues. And we go as a united front for the western half of the state, as well as to DC to talk to our congressional representatives. We have a government, a governor, excuse me, a government affairs committee. And it's their job to follow city and state legislative issues. We do the research for them, as well as our congregational delegation. We've helped to be an advocate for the city issues during session as well. Another one of our big projects is Leadership Rapid City. It's keyed in to give back to our community by training leaders and encouraging them to be involved and give back. Some wonderful outcomes from Leadership Rapid City are the Festival of Lights parades, Founder's Park, last year's first, the Day of Excellence, and of course, the huge success with Summer Nights on 7th downtown. We're working on putting together a new Leadership Rapid City program, targeting a segment of our community that wouldn't be able to take time off, work to go to Leadership Rapid City, or to be able to afford the cost of the class. And that's working with women who have, who have need to enter the working world and yet don't know how to get about it. So we're working on that with WAVI Youth and Family Services and some other local organizations. We work on the beautification award that we present for the city, educational seminars for members and non-members, customer service, school to work, give scholarships to things like bus scholarships so people can get to work. This year with the stock market the way it was, we weren't able to do that. And we also give away $6,000 for egg scholarships. We're currently in your budget as, at flat for $33,000, which is where we were last year. What we find is that everything is going up, and I'm sure you all experience this as well, printing, postage, and people want more and more information. And of course, since we act as a clearinghouse for so much of this, we do spend a lot of money on that. However, we've updated our website and we are getting more traffic on that. We had, we have about 5,000 hits per month, and of those, 75% are unique hits. We have packets that we sent out. We send out the investment report, which talks about what's going on in our city business. We send out school packets. There's many school children throughout the United States that will be in charge of learning about a state. So we'll send them a school packet on Rapid City area. And we also send out relocation packages every month. So those are some of the ways that we invest the $33,000 that you partner with us on.
Any questions?
Thank you again for your support.
This is a really easy crowd today. You should have been here last night.
No, what, what was I thinking?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's early. I'm warming up.
Economic development, yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Rylands. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Partnership here in Rapid City. My day job is I'm the president of Dakota Bank. I also want to thank you for the past support that you've given to economic development. Without that, we can't do some of the things that happen. We're all very happy about what happened in the paper today. And I'll tell you that that's hard work that's shared by a lot of people in Rapid City. It's no one individual, no individual group. Couple of things I want to say before I turn it over to Ben. We've made a lot of drastic changes in the economic development over the last 18 months. First one, hiring Ben Snow as our new president of economic development. I think he's brought a lot of energy and some new ideas to us that we can implement. We've reorganized our economic development. We used to have three or four different factions that were not communicating very well. We pared that down to two. I think that's helped our communication amongst ourselves and our communication to get out to others. We've increased our communication with our partners in Rapid City, one of the biggest ones being the city. We're trying to make a better connection with our liaison that we have at our meetings, with the mayor when he, when he shows up at executive meetings, to let you people know what's actually going on so that you can hear maybe some things before you have to read it in the paper. We've reconnected with the state of South Dakota. There was a long period of time where Rapid City and the state of South Dakota were disconnected when it came to economic development. We thought that was a very important partnership we needed to reconnect with, and we have. And since we've done that, the communication between the state and our office with Terry and Ben has been phenomenal, with a lot of leads generated because of that. We're developing new marketing material. Last year, the city council was gracious enough to increase our budget by $25,000 for marketing. I think in the next 60 to 90 days, you're going to see a great effort with a new website, linking different things together so people can actually find things that they want to find out about Rapid City when they go to look. We really appreciate that. We're also changed a little bit. I think for a time, Rapid City waited for prospects to come to us. And, and, you know, we thought that they would just show up and life would be good. We found out that doesn't work. We need to get out. We need to go to some of the shows and cooperate with the state of South Dakota. When they go to a specific show, whether it be the SHOT Show or whatever, we went to a biomedical show. We send representatives with the state to go out there and meet with those people on their turf. I think that gives us a lot better chance of landing some people back that moved to South Dakota. And it helps us, you know, try and grow the businesses that we have here and bring new ones into Rapid City. I think all of those reasons have really helped us take a proactive approach to economic development rather than a reactive approach. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ben Snow, the president of economic development.
Thank you, Rick. Hello, everybody. I would like to frame economic development in a light that I hope all of you can sort of understand and be able to explain it to all of our constituents citywide on what it is we do. Why is it the city should be giving a quarter of a million dollars to an organization like us? What is it that we're working on? Frame it this way. If that $250,000 yields the city through our hard work and efforts, five jobs that pay $50,000 per year, that investment has just paid for itself. And that's what we do. We go out and work with companies. Some of them are leads that come in when our telephone rings. Others, as Rick mentioned, are through the relationship we leverage with the state. And others are through our own marketing and efforts to reach out and identify opportunities, whether it's partnerships with the higher education community, or whether it's other business people who find out that we have some resources that can help them to grow their business. And they'll give us a referral from another business or another colleague. So that's how a lot of our leads are generated. And it's important that all of you understand the value of payroll in our community. Right now, I'm going to give you some really big numbers. And make no mistake, I'm not promising to deliver on these numbers, but I just want you to understand the gravity of some of the numbers that we deal with. Over, over the past 12 months, we have dealt with over 25 companies that represent over 3,600 jobs, that represent real estate requirements of almost 2 million square feet. Most of that is in the office and industrial space. And the total payroll of all of these contacts approaches $170 million. So the question I ask of you, going back to the original, how does this investment in economic development pay for itself? Are we confident we can deliver on higher than five jobs at $50,000 per year? Absolutely. And, and for that, that ought to be argument enough. And for that, that ought to be argument enough. But I want to share with you a couple of other things that we're working on that help to make Rapid City put its best face forward when we're interfacing with the rest of the world. In addition to all of those companies that have a touch point, a new perception, a new image of Rapid City after we get done with them, we are doing some marketing. We're redesigning our website. Within the next 30 days, you'll see there'll be a new website launch from the Economic Development Partnership, which will be another mechanism whereby people can interface with us. Most of the site selection decisions are made, about 95% of the decisions are made before they even pick up the telephone to contact us. So it's important that we have information in a place that's easy for them to get even before they contact us. So Rick already touched on that, and we're excited to launch that. In conjunction with the new website, there will be a whole slate of collateral marketing materials that our office, quite frankly, has not had for several years. So I'm really excited to be able to have some marketing materials with us that we can arm the entire community with, which helps make that sales proposition on why Rapid City would be good money, good investment. Couple of other things that you should know we are working on, and that is a better way of tracking all of the prospects that we deal with. We are working with the state, the governor's Office of Economic Development currently has a subscription, a licensing agreement with an online tracking software called Executive Pulse. And if we were to go out and secure Executive Pulse on our own, it would cost us between $8,000 and $10,000. But thanks to the good, warm relationships that we've built with the state, Rapid City has been selected as a beta community, if you will, to work with the state on licensing this product in one of the smaller markets throughout the state, other than just a statewide level. We're going to launch that in the next couple of weeks, and that'll be a good way for us to keep track of all of these touchpoints we have with companies. And I want you to also know that these are not just companies who are new to Rapid City. We have a very large vested interest in all of our existing companies. So with this software and tracking, it allows us to do some really good business retention visits to our own companies and find out what it will take for them to incrementally grow their operations. We can keep track of all of this, and so there's a good seamless communication happening between us and the business community, or the job creators in our community. Lastly, tracking real estate. I've been in front of many of you before and have indicated to you, we don't have the best methods of tracking our commercial real estate market, and that's about to change. We've just subscribed to, again, another online service. It's called CoStar Group. They're the best in the business in terms of tracking this type of data, commercial real estate markets. And we will have the ability now to present some very polished, quick turnaround reports to prospects on what real estate is available, both land and buildings. And with that, I just want to echo Rick's comments that we really depend on the city for our operations. It'll be an estimated 71% of our 2011 budget will be coming from resources that the taxpayers and you as its stewards have trusted us with. So we thank you for that in advance and are open to entertain any questions you may have of us.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben?
Ben, sorry, I have trouble with these buttons here. But Mr. Snow, I'm curious, you mentioned the realty tracking software, and I was just thinking, is any of that data actually available to the city?
It will be through our office. We sign a licensing agreement with them that we won't take and make this public to everybody.
Sure.
But in terms of your relationship with our office, if there's something you need, call me and I'll get it for you.
Okay, excellent. And also, I was curious, I actually want to commend you and your office on bringing Caterpillar Corporation to Rapid City, to the incubator.
I would like to interrupt you to recognize those parties who are responsible. They're with us today. Mr. Jim Meyerhouse is the CEO of the Black Hills Business Development Center. Terry Haverley is our vice president, and also wears another hat, is the business manager for the incubator. And when I came on board, when I came on board last summer, there was this little inkling of this Caterpillar potential. And so it's one of those that we've just sort of noodled along, and it's been kind of a slow burn, but that relationship has been maintained this entire year, and it's been consummated, obviously, with what was announced in the paper today. So all the credit to Jim and Terry with their work, working with an alum from School of Mines, as you all know, to bring that here, and we're delighted to have that company coming to Rapid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify what the budget request is for next year, because in the spreadsheet that I have, it says for 2010 budget, it was adjusted upwards due to increased efforts, and then the comment for 2011 request says it was adjusted to 2009 level, which would be 225,000, but the cell says 250. I'm just curious which is the correct amount?
The $250,000 is correct. We initially thought that we were going to have to cut that budget, but we did not have to.
Thank you.
Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Just curious, if you said it, I missed it, how much space is left out there in the incubator now?
2,000 square feet.
2,000 square feet left?
After we build, get to build out now.
A nice article in the paper, the way you worked in with Western Dakota Tech, as well as School of Mines.
That's an important dimension to this expansion, and that was something all of us have made a point to recognize. Not only is it important with the School of Mines connection, but because of the technical labor that they're looking for, Western Dakota Tech has already moved forward in getting what they need to make sure that they can fill that pipeline.
Thank you, Mr. Gary.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ben. Next one on the agenda is fire and ambulance. Chief?
Suppose you want to side mark a base again, just hanging out.
One.
You ready?
Sure, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks for letting us come before you. Try to make this brief today. Pauline's been so kind to pull up our particular budget for you, if you have any questions for later. What I did is, I would assume that you guys have a pretty good understanding of what the fire department does, who we are, and what we're all about. Just to give you a real brief rundown, just a couple of quick statistics for the new members on council. We do approximately 13,300 calls a year, at least that's what our totals were last year. With the fire department's staffing, we have 135 full-time employees. Of those, seven of those FTEs are actually assigned to the airport. Those firefighters work out of the airport fire station, and Cameron pays for them out of his enterprise fund at the airport. The remainder of our FTEs, 30 of those are assigned to our ambulance enterprise, and again, are funded by the ambulance side of what we do in our business, which leaves you a remaining balance of about 98 full-time employees that are basically funded by the fire department budget, or Cost Center 202. Prepare just a few talking points real quick to kind of give you an idea of where we are today with our budget, proposed budget for 2011. We break our budget down into three categories, one being that ambulance enterprise, two being the fire, or the largest portion of our budget, and then the last one is our regional hazardous materials response team. It's a joint city-county hazmat team that's available to basically the region, and the fire department supports that and houses the equipment and so forth. So, real quick, the hazmat budget, that's a relatively small budget. 2010 approved budget was about $32,000. 2011 proposed is 26,800, which gives you a reduction of about $5,183, or 16%. Came up with those cuts through things like we cut back on some equipment repairs, line item. Travel and training was cut significantly down, about $2,500. And then we did away with some dues and subscriptions for cost savings of about $1,500. And again, so about a 16% decrease in that hazmat budget. Next is the ambulance enterprise. We're pretty proud of that operation started about seven years ago, and we do operate a successful ambulance enterprise, and it is able to fund itself. 2010 approved budget was, excuse me, $2,734,000. 2011 proposed, $2,726,000, for a budget reduction of about $7,900, or 0.03%. Just some slight reductions in salaries, wages and benefits due to a couple of retirements, as well as some cutbacks in fuel costs. And then we picked up a lower interest rate on some lease purchases we have on some ambulances. We also had some slight increases in things like liability insurance, professional services. We're looking at doing an external audit of our billing process. Communications, we had to budget some extra money for some updated communications equipment we have on the ambulance that allows us to do wireless data transfer of information from the ambulance itself to the hospital, and provides for better patient care and so forth. The doctor can actually guide the paramedic as to what to do next, based on what the physician can see in the hospital. Also, some computer and software upgrade to improve our billing performance. And then also, we're doing some upgrading of some EMS office furniture and things like that. So, again, an overall reduction on that of about 0.03%. Lastly, the largest part of our budget is the fire budget. 2010 approved budget was $8,560,000. 2011 proposed budget, $7,746,000, for a budget reduction of about $310,000, or a 3.8% reduction. We did that through, to kind of break it down further, of that $310,000, we saved about $208,000 through salary and wages of a number of higher-ranking, long-term employees that retired in the last year to year and a half, as well as when those people retired, we were able to save some money as well with benefits and insurance. With the savings of the retirements, came out to be about $307,000, so that picked up the lion's share of our reduction in budget. And then, of course, when those higher-ranking people retire, we replace them with new employees at a much lower rate of pay. Numerous line items underwent very small incremental increases and decreases that due to things like we opened a new fire station, so the old fire station isn't going to cost as much to upkeep, because now we have a new facility. As well as when we purchased new equipment, we're able to defer some maintenance costs and things like that of the older equipment as we replace it with new. So that's where we're at today. I will emphasize the fact that the majority of our cuts, the money that we were able to save, came from approximately 12 people retiring. I can say if we were to go through this same exercise with our budget for another round of cuts like we did this year, we would probably be looking at a pretty substantial cut in either services or numbers of employees resulting in layoffs and things. So, bit of a scary time for us. The general message to my employees at the fire department are to basically explore ways to do more with less. On a daily basis, we look at the operation we do and the service we provide to the community, and we're always looking at ways to become more efficient, more effective, and still maintain that high level of service that the communities basically trusted us with. So with that, I'll yield to questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the chief?
Chief, I just have a few questions. One of the areas I'm looking at that it shows that you decreased in, and it just, from a practical point of view, it seems pretty crucial, is the tires with the maintenance, decrease of 23. Is there any possibility that will have any sort of negative impact?
Tires was one of those particular line items that we did take a little bit of reduction with, because we do, we've purchased, to give you a rough estimate, we did a smaller fire engine we use for forest fires and grass fires, so there's new tires on that one. We replaced, we've got an ambulance coming, there's new tires on that, a couple of new fire engines. So our fleet has been, I guess, refreshed a little bit, so we think we'll have a little savings in tires and other, and there's other little line items like repair of rolling stock and things like that, so.
Right. Great. And then there were two things that you mentioned in talking about long-term cost savings that I'm kind of interested in. The first one being the external audit, and the second one being your upgrading and your billing practices. And I was wondering how you see those, you know, saving money in the long term, if you could maybe elaborate just a little bit more.
What we're going to do is, we budgeted it for it a couple of times, and we've pushed it off for other reasons, because we just weren't quite ready for that external audit. The ambulance part of our operation, again, is an enterprise fund, it's a very in-vault process. It's, the fire department is, or the fire side is basically all general funds, and the enterprise fund is, again, it's really a business for us, and so it's taken us kind of out of our comfort level in that we're trying to run it like a business. So what we want to do after seven years is, we really want to have somebody come in with some expertise and look at our overall operation of how we bill patients, how we process the information as we get it after the call is generated, and basically, just to see that our processes are as optimal and as effective as possible. And we think maybe if we spend a little bit of money on doing an audit like that, we may find some ways that we can save some money and identify inefficiencies and things like that. So I will applaud staff over there. We do a great job nationally speaking. Our collection rates are above national averages, so we have a very small skeleton crew. There's four women over there that just do a bang-up job with collections. And again, we set the bar nationally, so we want to continue that effort, continue to have good collections, and keep that enterprise fund successful, so.
Sure. And then also with the upgrading, your billing, how are you doing that? Is it an automated?
Now, what we did is, we purchased new laptops or notebooks for the ambulances with touchscreens, and everything is done wireless now. So as the paramedics are on the call, they can literally sit with their notebook in their lap and do the patient care report, and then wirelessly submit that both to the hospital, back to the fire station. It's truly, interestingly enough, an effort to go more paperless. Everything now is wireless and through software and all that. So it's going to really make our operation more efficient, and definitely a lot less. I mean, literally, we have, we have to rent space due to files, boxes of files that we keep and records, patient care records and all that. We think there's a better way to do that, and if nothing else, we'll save on some rental space, so, yeah. That's what we're trying to do. And it was a pretty elaborate upgrade. To give you a little more, it's going to, a lot of coding has to get done with different ambulance, things we do, how we bill a patient, all that. We've re-identified our code, or come up with new codes that will be more in line with what the state wants for reporting, as well as nationally, what the EMS folks would like to see us code, all the different parts of an ambulance call. So we integrated some new software, some new coding, and then a better, more efficient way to bill a patient.
Right. And so it's basically, it kind of sounds like a point-of-sale system for convenience factor. Well, that sounds very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chief? Deb?
Just for the finance office. Did we add on everybody's utilities, like for electricity, that's going up to what, Tracy, is it 14? Is it going up? What'd they say ours was going to be? Up to 19%? And I'm looking at most of the peoples that have come through even already, they have not put in 19%. So I guess what I would be asking is, where would the shortfall come this year from if we did not have enough money for electricity or utilities? Because it looks like to me, when I'm looking through most of the utility, again, for electricity, I guess I would like to know that before we have the same thing happen as last year, if I might. What we did was, in 2008, we budgeted for 2010 already a 10% increase. We did not see that 10% increase until, you know, into the year a little bit. We also built on top of that an additional 10% increase for the 2011 budget, so there is about a 20% increase budgeted from 2009 to 2011. In 2009, we still had the flat rate.
So I have worked with Mr. Jim Keck at Black Hills Power since they came out with the determination of an average of nineteen point eight percent increase, dependent upon what kind of account it is and what kind of facility that it's serving. And with the numbers that he projected, with our current costs in two thousand nine, it appears that we will have sufficient money in the budget, the way it's budgeted now, as general fund as a whole. I have not looked at each individual cost center, just because, again, it depends on the size of the account and the type of building that it, that it serves. So but as a whole, the general fund does have enough in the electricity line item, based on our estimates.
So is, like, Pauline, like for the fire department, they budgeted nine hundred and six dollars. That would be their increase. You budgeted in your budget, in case they have a shortfall, is that what you're saying, in our general fund to cover fire and all these individual entities that we have in the city? Is that what you're saying?
When we asked the departments to put in their budgets for two thousand ten and two thousand eleven, we asked them to build in that ten percent increase. So they, they had built that in on their own, but we did look at it a little closer when we were looking at the budgets just because we knew that the raise was increasing to make sure that it was at least a twenty percent increase over two thousand nine actuals. Did that answer your question?
Am I not getting this right? So they only had to budget in ten, what I'm seeing is they budgeted in ten percent per department and then you're covering the other half. No?
No, they budgeted within their own, their own cost center. They have budgeted between two thousand nine and two thousand eleven at about a twenty percent increase.
Okay, so what we have to take for utilities last year, how much, if we budgeted between two thousand nine and two thousand eleven, an extra increase, how much did we have to take out of our undesigned cash to pay utilities last year?
In two thousand nine, I believe the only, the only cost center that we had to supplement for electricity was the DALL cost center. Everyone else had money within their budgets to cover their electric bill for two thousand nine. Two thousand ten, there, there may be a shortfall. But again, I believe in discussing this with the department headsman, Mr. Preston was still here, some of those departments could absorb those within their, their cost centers, others, we will have to go back and probably look at a supplement for them, whether it's from council contingency or undesigned cash, that will be, up to the council to decide which, where the funding for that would be.
And that was the two thousand ten or the two thousand eleven you just said? And so we did, and you said for then two thousand eleven, there would be a total of twenty percent because you put an extra ten, thinking the nine point eight, and they already had ten percent that you already budgeted?
Correct. So there, because we added the ten percent into the budget for two thousand ten, we added an additional ten percent for two thousand eleven for a total of twenty percent over two thousand nine actuals, which is what our estimates are based on.
Okay. So would it be that hard to see each individual person that we, our company, that, like the fire department, whatever department that takes the utilities out of there, with your increase or decrease, what that total would be with your nineteen point eight increase to make sure? I guess what I'm looking at is, the, the year before, they told me they had enough and then we had some issues. And then I just want to make sure this year that we're covered and we don't come back and say, well, we, we were supposed to do this, this and this, but this is what happened. So what I'm looking at is to make sure that we have that budgeted in there. So each center, like his, is ten percent that we have made sure that he has enough electricity and doesn't have to cut his services or anything he has to do later because of our decrease or our increase.
I could provide you with the estimate that Mr. Keck and I have worked on, if that would be helpful. It is not by cost center, again, because each, each cost center has different types of facilities and different types of accounts. So if you're a smaller account, the increase might be less than what a larger, as far as a percentage, than what a larger account would be. And so we have just taken an average for what we were given from Mr. Keck. But I can give you the general fund as a total, if that would be helpful when we put together all this information that you're requesting.
That, that would be good, Pauline, and then I could always go through it and you can, if these guys understand it and I'm just not understanding, I can go through it without having to have you do extra work too, so I'm not offended by that. Thank you, Ms. Pauline.
Any other, Gary?
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Just curious, being optimistic, next year we're having a better year in that. What do you think your greatest need, with all your cutbacks and what you're doing now, be it equipment, what do you think next year would be your greatest need?
After a few years of zero growth and then this year with some slight cuts, our biggest priority, if things were to rebound a little bit, would be to go back and patch in the things that we've had to give up the last couple of years. Travel and training gets, you know, whacked a little bit each year. You know, the, the, the small equipment purchases that we've put off, nothing real big. There's no large purchases we're able through. The nice thing is we purchase fire stations, fire trucks, building upgrades, things like that out of CIP dollars. So the big-ticket items, right now, we're budgeted for, so we're doing okay in that regard. It's the, it's the small day-to-day items that we're going to have to go back and, and take a hard look at. And, and again, something like travel and training, I can tell you too, a firefighter is critical. You know, we base life safety on training day-to-day, and when you continue to whittle away at that budget, something's going to have to give. So our immediate needs would be to go back and, and fill in some of those holes that have been created. I hope that answers your question.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Can you tell me how much in travel and training that you would need in order to be sufficient to do what you need to do for, for safety? And what you're saying is to make sure these firefighters are getting what they need. How much would that shortfall, or how much is that shortfall if we had to make it up?
Right now, we're able to maintain the minimums. To, to say a dollar figure of what we would need to, you know, the, obviously, the more training, the better your firefighters are. So I'm sorry, Deb, I wouldn't be able to really quantify that anymore. I know this year we went through between five and six thousand dollar cut in travel and training, so that's significant. It may mean things like professional development may have to suffer, but we'll maintain the bases like EMTs having to get their certificates from year to year. And, and there's things that we have to do every year to maintain the level of qualifications and to, to, again, maintain the level of service. It's the things above and beyond to, again, develop officers to pursue higher ranks and things like that that we'll have to put off for now. So not, not critical things, but definitely things to grow the organization, we will have to go back and try to re-severe those funds sometime.
I guess I'm not offended by the little things as you were talking about, but not offended, that's not even a good word. But when it comes to travel and training, training and education is huge for most of us in order to do our job efficiently and learn what we need to do. And when it comes to firefighters and policemen, that's huge. I mean, they're, they're the safety of our, our community. So I would be looking at trying to put some more, at least six thousand dollars back in this budget because to me, again, that's the safety of the citizens and these guys are, are saying they need it. So if that's crucial, I think, and he's saying it's crucial, I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments and, and your understanding of the need for training and travel and, and that particular line item. I will tell you, as I mentioned earlier, because of those cost savings due to some retirements, the other small day-to-day things that it takes to run the fire department were, we took some, some minor changes or some minor cuts. I will tell you that if we had to come back to the table again next year and go through this same exercise without all those retirements, yeah, things like training and travel and, and would be drastically cut. So we'll, we'll be okay for this, this round, let's put it that way. So thank you for that.
Dave, do you have one question too?
Thank you, Ron. Mike, it's more of a comment than a question. I really appreciate what you've done to the budget. I, I truly do. And I, and I appreciate your comments about trying to save money on some of the little things. I think you glossed over what those little things are. And I want to share with the rest of you at this table, as a former firefighter and EMT, those little things aren't little. Those new stations and fire trucks are really flashy and they look really neat. But the seal on my mask saved my life. The training saved somebody else's life. Let's not shortcut that. I think we want to put that on our review list and see if there's some ways that, if there's a, if, if there are dollars that show up to be moved, this is a place that we need to try to find, whether it be into, as Deb is suggesting, into the, the training side, Mike, or whether it be into whatever fund that you feel fills those little things. Thank you.
And, and you're absolutely correct with your, with your comments and your analogy of, of our job. It is the little things that keep the firefighters safe every day, and you're absolutely right. And, and I will reemphasize the importance of training and travel. We've even done things like, instead of sending two firefighters to a particular conference and having them come back and regurgitate that information to the rest of the, of the crews, we're looking to say, instead of sending two firefighters, can we bring that, one of those instructors to Rapid City, host a class here and maybe even save a few hundred bucks? So I mean, we're down to really looking at, you know, we're looking at, obviously, we've, we've just about stepped off from flying anywhere. We're trying to drive everywhere if there's a cost savings there, and we still, we need to get those people out to the training, so. And unfortunately, we're in a portion of the country where you just got to travel to get some of that quality training. There's not a lot of paid fire departments around here that we can exchange those services with. So we're at a bit of a disadvantage because of the region, so, thank you.
You put that on the list, Tracy. Okay. Sam?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I remember when the transition took place in, in two thousand and two. And I also remember when the previous provider for ambulance services came to the, the city, I think, one of my very first meetings back then, and asked for more money even though there was a signed contract. So we've come a long way since then. And I remember one of the justifications for taking over the contract and the work and bringing it in-house was, was that it would be more efficient and also the, the collection rates. Some, my recollection is that AMR's collection rate, the delinquency rates of, of paying the ambulance bills are very high. And I think that over the last eight years that that's dropped considerably. Would you be, would you be willing just to provide a, a ten-year history, if you have it, of what the, of what, of the delinquency rates and the, just kind of an overview? I think that would be very good for, for those of, for those of us that weren't around when that transition took place to give us a good picture of how far things have come. Thank you.
And that's a great comment, and I appreciate that. I can tell you, there is a whole nother success story within the fire department and how our, our billing department basically is able to go out and collect those funds. And again, nationally speaking, we exceed the national averages, and I can tell you that the private providers really struggle with that. Because they were so large, large corporation nationwide, if they didn't get paid, they just wrote it off and that was it. And obviously, us being a, a smaller provider and literally only serving our community, it's a little, it's an exercise for us every day to go out and, and continue to pursue those people and try to get collections up and all that. And I can tell you that we have a staff that does an excellent job. And I would love to provide you with those, those numbers because it paints a, a really a success story of, of what we're able to do over there. So I'd be glad to do that for you, and I'll, I'll, I'll put a packet together and it would basically paint out at least the last seven years. If I go to ten, I'm into AMR's books and I don't know if I could get those, so, thank you.
Jordan?
Chief, I just had a thought, actually based on something you said, that given the area of the country that we're in, it is hard to go to different areas and that we must travel. And also just thinking of being a good neighbor to other surrounding communities and the limited resources that some of them are facing in this economy, is there ever been any discussion on working collaboratively with other surrounding communities to help them get the training and also subsequently share some of the cost in going to these conventions and training centers?
Interesting point. About seven to ten days ago, I had a, a lunch meeting with the president at Western Dakota. And we're looking at, you know, in the last few years, we built a training facility out there that Rapid City uses. And we also are in a kind of a collaborative effort with the volunteer fire, fire departments in Pennington County. And we open that up to the region if anybody wants to come and use that. So that was one success story. What we want to do is we want to take that to the next level. And our vision, and he and I had a pretty good brainstorm session, what we would like to do is make that facility out there a regional training facility to where someday it's able to basically fund itself, we're able to put some staffing out there and, and pay for that staffing. And what we would do is we would open up as a regional training facility and departments from around our portion of the country would be able to come here and take classes on weekends, during the week and all that. So there's a lot of work. Rapid City, we are not just a Rapid City Fire Department or a resource in the county. We're truly a regional resource and we're looked upon for a lot of instructors and expertise and all that. So we do absolutely anything we can to help fire departments in the region and, and again, offer up instructors. And, you know, we have a lot of collaborative agreements with mutual aid and things like that. Not every department in Western South Dakota can have a hazmat team and a rescue team and, and all those things. So we do everything we can, still protect our own constituents, but we offer up our services to the region too. So we're, we're very much in search of that goal, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I, I just want to say, I am, I'm pretty, I'm absolutely impressed with how prepared you are and frankly, how forward-looking your department has been in some of these efforts. Thank you.
And not because I'm the chief, I would say that a community our size, I would put us up against a fire department our size with anybody in the country. And that's not me, that's not even senior staff, that's the fire department as a whole, and the support we get from city council and the mayor's office, so, thank you for that.
Bonnie?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, safety is going to be our number one concern, but we need you, and it sounds like you already are trying to work smart because sometimes the old ways, you know, we just need to figure out smarter ways. And, you know, and so we rely on you about when it gets to that point about employee safety. And so, because we don't want the employees to take the cuts. And I just have, however, that doesn't mean we can't find the cuts somewhere else. So that's our, I just have some questions on your budget. And part of this is just for learning from myself. On this forty-three fifty furniture and minor equipment, is this, I mean, there's no change in it? And I guess one of my questions I have is, is this like for a new facility or just to replace, like,
that is really-
old equipment or?
That's really a catch-all for us. That encompasses a lot of things, everything from, obviously, furniture. You know, as a, as you're aware of, a fire station is staffed twenty-four, seven by not hundred-and-ten-pound men and women, but two-hundred-and-twenty-pound men and women. So we do go through furniture and, and items to keep the stations up and running. The minor equipment is a, a really a, a large item for us. That's the things like, when a firefighter breaks an axe, you got to order one if they, you know, a piece of hose or, or. I can tell you that, obviously, to run a service organization like we do, there's a lot of minor equipment that either breaks or need repaired. So, you know, to, to drill down into that one, it's, it's, I hate to use the word catch-all, but it is, it's just what it is. It's furniture and, and minor equipment. I can tell you, we, we break a lot of things, not by design, but just, I guess, the way things are, so. I, I know that does not answer your question, but I, it's just difficult to really tell you exactly what, what is under that one.
Is that, that wouldn't be like office equipment, it's more like-
Nope, just furnishings.
Furnishings and, it just seems substantially higher than your actual O-nine, so that's why. I was questioning that. And then forty-five ninety, oh, no, before we go there, forty-three twenty, buildings and structures. Can you tell me a little bit about what that is for? Seems like it was a lot higher in O-nine, but.
Yep, and I will defer to Chief Colvis over here. He's looking at our, our little more elaborate set of notes, but.
Thank you. The, the forty-three twenty line item, structures, that's a capital line item for any repairs that need to be made at the fire stations that are typically over five thousand dollars. So if we have a hail event or somebody runs through a couple of garage doors we need to replace overhead doors or just generally repairs, I think Gary's smiling here, but that does occur, believe it or not.
Does it occur with the same employee?
Once in a while, yes.
If that happens, do they get extra training?
Yes, they do. Anyway, that, that particular line item is for the bigger ticket repairs that may occur through the, for the stations.
Okay, and the other question I have is on forty-five ninety-seven search and rescue.
And you're, you wanna know what that's for?
Yeah, it seems like there's a, yeah, I lost where it is, but it seems like there was a difference, um-
That particular line item is, um, funds the dive rescue team, the Pennington County, Rapid City Dive Rescue Team, and, uh, we also receive, I believe, is it fourteen thousand next year too? It's this year, anyway. Fourteen thousand from Pennington County that's also supplemented into that line item too. So, that's what that funding's for, is the, is the dive team.
Okay, so, in the, um, the first, the twenty-one thousand, did that include that fourteen thousand?
Yeah, actually, that would be, that would include the supplement too, that's where that came from, that figure.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and you keep your men and women safe.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the fire department? Gary?
Could you handle one more kudo?
One more what?
Kudo.
Sure.
If you remember back after nine eleven, and, uh, there's a crew from Rapid City took out that statue and that-
Yep.
Then you had the gentleman, uh, the chief came back here from New York. Al Cornell is still in contact with him, and he's still totally amazed, not only of the equipment and the firehouse and that, but professionalism that, that our fire department has. He still raves about how impressed he was, "So, you guys did a hell of a nice job getting a New Yorker-"
Good.
"-wanting to come back out." Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's it, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
P and R must be parks in wreck, I would take it. That's what's holding up the wall back there, so I'm gonna-
I had a basketball coach that I was seeing, and they'd make you run.
Go ahead, Gary, anytime you're ready.
I'm ready. I do not have a prepared statement, uh, all I will say is that it's been the last, last two years have been tough years. Next year's gonna be a tough year. Um, our staff has risen to the occasion and completed their tasks, and I think the city, uh, is better for what, uh, our guys do. We have about forty-five and a half, uh, full-time FTEs, uh, on our staff. Most of our, um, divisions are very highly run with temporary workers. Uh, as you know, our summertime, uh, increases those, however, the wintertime, uh, because of our facilities now do not decrease that much. We still have to have those, uh, staff to run Swim Center, the ice arena, those type of things. Um, we've, just so far this year, we've had a really good year, and hopefully, if the economy holds up, next year's revenues will be, uh, good as well through the Parks and Recreation. Uh, we're ahead of most our estimates this year. We're looking forward to actually a fairly good year next year. We've had to reduce some, uh, line items, as has every department, and Parks and Recreation, um, will step up, and we will continue to do our part and take care of the city's recreation and park facilities. With that, any questions?
Uh, Dev Headcock?
Yes, on your capital outlay, you're negative thirty-nine point six percent. Um, because of that negative thirty-nine point six percent, what have you cut in your capital outlay? Meaning, is it big equipment, is this something that might be a necessity, um, anytime soon? Meaning, um, equipment that you have to have or you should have right now?
This is our total budget here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Several things have happened, uh, in the capital outlays. Uh, one of those is we reduced, uh, I believe, around twenty thousand dollars in the Parks Department budget, uh, for capital outlay. Uh, we have, uh, done that the last couple of years. Uh, we have delayed, um, several expenditures on some of our fleet, uh, and, and we've gotten by, we're going, you will see a RFP come through for an aerial truck, which we delayed last year, um, but we have to have that this year. Um, it will be coming through, uh, next year. Uh, we've delayed some purchases on our, uh, pickup and truck fleets, uh, but the last two years, we've delayed some of our mower purchases. Next year, we have to purchase the mowers. We had about forty feet, and when I, when I say forty feet of mower, that means cutting surface in the shop for over two weeks this spring, um, because of the age of the equipment. And so, we have to go out and buy some more mowers, uh, next year. And so, twenty thousand dollars that is in, um, parks, uh, there's several thousand dollars in recreation and ice, as well as aquatics that have, um, gone by the wayside. We have, um, some of the items in the capital outlay. We end up, and I'm gonna, like, the swimming pool lily pads, and I don't know if you know what the lily pads are, but they're these plastic round things, they don't quite make it to, they've been in the capital purchases, they don't quite make it to a capital purchase 'cause they're only forty-eight-hundred or forty-two-hundred dollars, and, and Tracy won't let us put them into capital, so we moved some of that-
(laughing)
Some of that money that was in capital to purchase some of those items that just barely don't make it to capital into, um, repairs items this year. So, some of that has been moved rather than delayed, so not much of it, but there's a vehicle in recreation and ice that was scheduled that's not gonna be purchased, uh, next year, so.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, I guess what I've tried to get at is, you look at the Parks Department, there's a lot of negative cuts, there's a lot of cuts. And we keep expanding parks, we expand their services, we overload them in a sense, and then we come back and say, "You need to cut some, you gotta cut this budget. We gotta cut your capital outlays, you gotta cut, you know, keep your people, but keep your capital outlays." Um, and, and capital outlay is just as important as your people when you're trying, as, uh, Mr. Davis said, those little things sometimes add up to a big thing in order to run a department. So, I'm looking at, again, a lot of negative, and, uh, we take it in stride that, uh, we love parks, the community loves parks, but who takes care of them, and where does that cash flow come from? So, um, I'll be looking at Jerry's budget and see, um, it, it's something, um, that we need to take a look at for parks. We have expanded, um, Jerry, do you know how many parks in the last couple of years and, that we have, or how, I don't know how you'd do the comparable, but-
Acres.
Acres, that we have added to our park system in the last couple of years that you needed to take care of?
Um, acreage-wise, I, it, I would, it would only be a guess, but several hundred acres of parks, but if you think back to the last six years, uh, Omaha Boulevard, oh, was redone, Katrin Boulevard was redone, Fort Interstate were redone, um, Vicki Powers Park was added, Parkview Tennis Courts were added, Rapid City Swim Center was added, Kansas City Street was added, uh, Chucklene Park, Skyline Drive, Red Rocks Park in the last six years.
Now, um, I guess that's my understanding, so new, um, people, um, as well as the people that are, have been here for a while, that's a lot of added addition with people, um, needing, uh, I understand, money, but, um, if we continue to add, uh, responsibility, with responsibility becomes, uh, cash flow, and, uh, he needs it for his department in order to keep that responsibility and that quality of service for the parks as well. So, um, if you look at his budget, there's a lot of negative here, um, meaning, uh, he needs some help. So, I don't know where, at this point, we get cash flow for, to help this department, but it looks like it needs it. And, uh, if we want quality of service and we want those parks to continue, number one, think about when you add another park to his service, and number two, uh, where do you plan to get that funding source? So, Jerry, you've done a great job. Our parks look awesome in Rapid City, and you have expanded and done a very good job at doing that, so we appreciate that. We just need to take a look at, uh, the workload you have and, and, uh, what we're doing to you, and, uh, still cutting it, cutting your, uh, cash flow. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Uh, Jerry, where do you see your, um, biggest need is? Like, if you were gonna increase the budget, where would you increase it?
It would be probably our staff area.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It would be in staffing.
Staffing.
Employees.
Okay. I also have a question about mosquitoes. I was looking for you yesterday. Um, I see you didn't cut that, and I'm glad. However, it was really embarrassing because I had families coming from two different parts of the country, the third week in June, and the mosquitoes were like picking up the dogs off the porch, not to mention myself, and that's pretty difficult to do. So, I was wondering what suggestions you might have to keep that from happening, and I know it's hard because you can't predict the weather and the conditions, but it was, um, surprising to me that they were so bad this year.
And they are bad, and as you say, we didn't cut, but what, what you don't see is, is, uh, two years ago, when we were getting another thirty thousand dollars from the state, which the state does not, or has not in the last two years given grants out. So, in other words, the mosquito budget was cut fifty percent this year, uh, because there was no grants. Um, that's another thing I didn't mention, but since the mosquito West Nile virus started in two thousand and five, um, two of our full-time staff now are on mosquito patrol from May through September. That's pretty much what they do during the summertime. So, that's taken two of those staff members out for that, uh, that job. Uh, they go out early in the mornings and late at nights. Um, so, you know, they're working the daytime shift as well, but they're putting in a lot of overtime for that mosquito, uh, patrol. What can you do about it? Um, itronella candles, uh, screens, um, they're, they're bad everywhere. I have bats.
Yeah, 'cause they were even really bad inside my house, and that was very, uh, so I can't have candles in there, so. Uh, no, I'm just thinking about the city, 'cause, um, I know I'm not the only one that had problems with the mosquitoes, and so that's a concern for me, especially with West Nile, 'cause there hasn't been, um, maybe there's not as many cases, but it's still a problem in South Dakota. So, it becomes a safety issue too for people.
And, and that's correct, but, you know, I, I would say if, even if you had another hundred thousand dollars, you're still gonna have mosquito problems in areas. It, it, it's not gonna go away. Uh, we'll do the best we can with the money we have. We could do better, but, you know, like I said, even with more money throwing out the problem, you're still gonna have mosquitoes.
Hmm. Um, and is there some, like, mosquitoes a big deal to me because they love me? Um, but are there other kind of problems, like, like mosquitoes, that we need to take a look at also?
I, I guess I would clarify the question, I mean-
Well, I just-
The health risks.
Yeah, or there's, or like, what's your biggest problems that you have people coming to you and complaining about, I guess, that? But, I mean, you don't have to have one, that's good.
Well, we try to put out those fires as best we can, and, and they're all over the board, whether it's closing down swimming pools because of storms, or, um, not mowing the grass in time, and it's six inches high to, you know, those type of, of things. I'm not sure there's any one problem we could take money and throw at to, to solve it.
Okay. Thank you, and I agree, we have beautiful parks. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Yep, one more, please.
Okay.
Um, on other insurance, you have like twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-four point seven percent on your, um, difference.
What is in the two thousand and eleven budget should be moved up into the forty-two-thirteen line item? As you, if you look at that one in, in two thousand and nine, the actual was almost twenty-four thousand, so the two should be added together and put into the one-line item.
Which would be what percent? So, it brings a percent down, is what you're saying? I guess.
Yeah, it brings it way down, 'cause if you add these two together, you got a plausible about fourteen, fourteen- That would be a five-point-six percent increase on that line item, then?
Okay. I appreciate that, uh, explanation. Thank you.
Any, any other questions for Jerry? Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jerry, could you just give, uh, the council kind of an overview of the two golf course enterprise funds in comparing, um, two thousand and nine to two thousand and eight, and, and how we're trending in two thousand, uh, two thousand and ten? Is, basically, is Executive Enterprise Fund and the, and the Meadowbrook Enterprise Funds, are they breaking even, or are they holding their own?
Okay. Um, Meadowbrook Golf Course Enterprise Fund, for the last four years, three years, for the last three years, has made a profit, a small profit, but a profit. Uh, we did so again last year when all the financial things had, had come in. Um, Meadowbrook's profit supports the Executive Golf Course' loss. Uh, in the last, well, every year since I have been here, we have lost money at executive. But, the caveat to that is that it was over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars six years ago. We're down under eighties-
Seventy.
Around seventy thousand dollars in loss now. Now, the other thing is that the La Croix Golf Course, and I bring this up every year, we pay thirty-four thousand dollars worth of water for La Croix Golf Course, which the YMCA runs. That money is paid out of the Executive Golf Course, which pays for the La Croix Golf Course, which adds to the deficit of the Executive Golf Course. So, if you take that off, you're down to thirty-five, forty thousand dollars at Executive Golf Course, which is, you know, almost a hundred thousand dollars less than it was six years ago. Can we break even over there? I'm not sure that we'll ever get there. If the housing projects over there and the offices get in, we'll have more golfers over there, I'm sure, but, uh, we're doing pretty good. But Meadowbrook does make a profit, uh, for the last four years, and we're pretty proud of that.
Are you seeing the rounds, uh, per year increase, or are they stagnant, or are they trending down?
Okay. Um, exec, executive course, I think the rounds have been pretty much stable every year. Meadowbrook, uh, was way down last year. If you remember, we had three blizzards during the best golfing time in April and May, so that really hurt us last year. Um, so the, the rounds were down compared to last year, we're, we are up-
Thirty-five hundred rounds.
Thirty-five hundred rounds from last year, which was a bad year for us, so. But if you look back over the course, we're probably, you know, within several hundred rounds of oh-eight.
One last question. Um, in looking at your rounds of golf, say, at Meadowbrook, are you finding your rounds are increasing on the, uh, annual pass side, or are they increasing on the green fee side?
Um, Doug Lowe, who is our recreation manager, who oversees the golf course, just, uh, said that this year, the increase is on the, is on the- that this year, the increase is on the green fee side, so we're getting a little more revenue with the green fees being paid.
Okay. Thank you. Good information.
Sam.
Thank you, Mr. President. The question I'm going to ask really pertains to three presentations that'll pertain to the golf, swimming and ice, so I'll just ask for it now. And that is, would you be willing to bring forward, and I've seen it at past recaps in past budget years, but would you be willing to bring forward a spreadsheet of, maybe include the year before you came and then, and then, and then since then, of the per-rounder, per-golfer subsidy, per-course, and then the roll-up? The per-swimmer subsidy, per-pool, and then the roll-up? And the per-ice-user subsidy as well? Would you be willing to do that? Do you have...
Yeah, I mean, we can get that for you.
I think that would be very beneficial for the council to see, per-business unit and then the roll-up numbers.
If I might ask, when you say roll-up numbers...
Let's just, let's just assume that Executive, the city subsidy is 50 cents or a dollar a round and then for another golf course, it's, we lose or we gain or we make a dollar a round and then you roll it all up and then you say, well, we had this many rounds of golf played and this was the average taxpayer subsidy per-round and then what the total was.
So, individual facility and then per-division?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jerry? Mr. Ray, why?
Thank you. The question, Jerry, is you're being charged for water at the Executive at La Croix and at the Meadowbrook, correct?
All three of them, yes, correct, sir.
But we don't charge any of the other private organizations for water?
At...
I mean, nonprofits?
At this point, I'm not aware. However, the golf course are Enterprise Fund and I think that's the reason that we pay for the water.
The other question I have is, is there a sunset clause for paying for the water for La Croix links?
The contract comes due in 2016.
2016. So, of that loss, the $80,000 loss, $34,000 comes from La Croix links?
That is correct. That is my understanding.
The other question I have is that concessions at Meadowbrook, we don't control, correct?
That is correct. We have a concessionaire.
I mean, if we had the concessions there, I wonder if there would be opportunity? I mean, I've seen some of the numbers from like the Civic Center and those things, if they ran properly, if it wouldn't behoove the city to have the concessions, I think.
We feel that that is a revenue source that is escaping us right now and I think you'll hear more about that in the next two years, about whether or not if we can take over those concessions or not.
If we... How much is the Executive Golf Course being charged for water?
Could you repeat that again? I'm sorry.
How much is the Executive Golf Course being charged for water?
That, I don't know if... Pauline had it. The caveat to that is that you just passed the ordinance to reduce the charge of that. We were paying raw water rates and now at least we'll be able to pay the non-raw water rates as soon as that ordinance goes into effect.
You said that was...
Yeah.
You're paying treated rates.
We're paying treated rates, yes, sorry. Raw water, okay.
So, that's the total bill for Executive, $7,000?
In 2009, it was $7,000 for actual.
And then at La Croix links, it's $34,000?
Yeah, it's treated.
It's treated.
What's the difference? It was $31,000 in 2009.
Are we taking it out of the, at the Executive, are we just taking it out of the creek or...
That's correct.
What's the big difference?
That is correct.
We don't have that option at La Croix, obviously.
Take it out of the creek.
Right.
Yeah, you can.
Out of La Croix? You're going to pipe it or what?
Can we drill a well?
Serious question.
$34,000 a year and how long have they been, we've been running that thing? I mean, I guess it really, if it's paying the city Enterprise Fund, maybe it's an offset, but it's important to know when you look at these numbers, if, you know, when someone's saying that a golf course like the Executive is losing $80,000 a year, I think it's important to understand where the money's going. I mean, if I didn't know, I mean, yeah. Thank you.
Dave, how about...
I guess my point was when we talked about this, is anywhere in the city that we could get raw water, I was told that the savings wasn't big enough in order to do that and that if we wanted to do that, it wasn't worth the cost that we're going to do it. And that just shows you from one, one getting raw and one not, not, and you're right, you can't get raw at La Croix, but look at all the baseball fields, the parks and the different areas, and if that shows you the difference just on one golf course than the other, imagine that, and he just said how many acreage of parks we have in Rapid City. I guess I would like to see again how much savings we could have if we started pumping raw water instead of, and been trying to do that for a couple of years, but I don't know how we get it done, but I can talk to Robert Ellis, but this is proven fact that what that cash flow saves. Thank you.
Jerry?
I think one of the things you have to look at is a renter who gets the water free and a renter who has to pay for it as well. Executive Course is an Enterprise Fund, we know we have to pay for it. Our superintendent is right on the verge of making sure that is dry and wet at the same time. Somebody who's getting it free up to $34,000, are they excessively watering? I don't know. I can't say that, but that's an idea that I think you have to look at as well.
Bonnie?
Do we have like those kind of numbers? I guess we do, going back before the Y took it over. I mean, so we could, could maybe make the Y behave, improve their policies, but we could maybe ask them to if you think they're overwatering.
I mean, I'm not saying they are. I'm just saying there is a difference there and it could be. And I don't know for sure.
Well, because if we had, if we had comparisons, then we could say, hey, look before you guys took over, that was this and now it's this and be a good neighbor and be better at it.
It could be also La Croix Golf Course, if you go out there, a lot of that is, there are no trees, okay? Executive Golf Course, you got cottonwoods and deciduous trees all over the golf course, so the watering needs are going to be different for the both courses anyway, so... But we can find those numbers, I'm sure.
Yeah. Well, it'd be interesting to look at because we could certainly, trying to build partnerships with the Y and also it seems like, if it seems to us that it's a problem, we could just ask them about it. Thank you very much for all you do.
George?
Sir, I just had a quick question actually concerning this and also going with Ms. Peterson's thoughts of cooperations with the Y. Because I've had the chance to talk to Roger Gallimore concerning specifically this project and I was just wondering if anyone's brought up the question of how much it was costing the city when it was fully in our possession and how much that golf course is now through our agreement with paying the water alone, how much it's costing the city to have that exact same golf course functioning as it is today?
I don't have those numbers there, but it was a significant amount, a hundred and some thousand dollars that it was costing the city to run that golf course.
Sure. And has there been a cost savings or...
When we lease it, yeah. It's definitely been a cost saving. Not only a cost savings, but a definite benefit for the city. I mean, not only in money-wise, but in community-wise of their programs that they run out there, yes.
And my last question, can we, as a city council and just as a city as a whole, is there anything we can do to help you in moving forward to help cooperations and efforts like that, not only to save the city money, but to help your department in facilitating programs like that? Or is there any way that you could give us recommendations about that via email?
Right off the top of my head, I can't...
Sure.
We partner with a lot of people in the community and, you know, not only with our volunteers that we have, several thousands hours of volunteer work during the day, we partner with, we partner with the Lions Club, who has taken over one of our parks, the Kiwanis, which handles one of our parks, the YMCA, which handles the... So, we already have and every day I'm looking for those partnerships and if there's something that you can help us with, I will sure come forward with it, yes.
Right. I, maybe I worded that wrong. I just want to basically say that I really, I enjoy the fact that our Parks Department has taken that initiative to make this a community and a community cooperation with other facets of our community and I just would like to just show as personally, any way that I think we can help you to facilitate more of those cooperations.
Okay.
We'd like to move forward with that. Thank you.
Any other questions on this part of the Parks and Rec budget? Or are you going to say that's the whole budget, Jerry? Should we move on to the other part of your budget or was that all of it?
Oh, that...
I mean, are we doing, we're not talking Rec and Swimming and all that, are we?
And we can. I mean, that's...
Was that part of this?
I thought that was part of it, but...
Okay. My notes are wrong.
We have Parks and Rec and then we're down here to Rec Swimming and Ice.
Okay. So, anything else for Jerry?
On any other...
On any of... Dave.
Thank you, Ron. Jerry, just briefly, you've noted a quandary that you're in and that we've built a lot of parks. We're very proud of our parks. The citizens are very proud of the parks and you're running out of manpower to run the parks. We're running out of money to feed the manpower to run the parks. At what point do you encourage us as a council to quit building or accepting land or having more parks, when in fact we have, we have our citizens that keep saying, hey, put a new park in every development? So, give us some professional guidance here. Where's the balance? Because I don't think we're finding it real well right now.
Okay. To me, the balance goes to, part of my job is to find the resources to give to my employees to do the jobs that we do. When we expand our parks, we take on Red Rocks, we take on Vicky Powers Park, we take those on many years before those come into play and we look at that and say, what kind of resources are we going to go? Doug Lowe does a performa for each of those facilities that, when we're looking at those, he did one for Vicky Powers Park. Can we, how do we work this? Where's the money going to come from and how are we going to do that? And that's done way in the future and so far it has worked well. And as we expand, I will stand up here and tell you that if there's a park or a need in some area that I'm absolutely sure we can't handle and I can't find partners to help with it, that you need to look very closely that if this park comes into existence, you will have to bring up more money, more equipment and more time for us to handle that. So far, we've been able to expand within the budget. It's been hard, but there are areas that we've structured in the last six years that have helped us do that. The things that we used to do six years ago, we don't do now. As in any business, you have to look to the future and say, okay, this is coming on, how are we going to handle it? Some of that is just in a way, we've been doing our staffing, the way we use our equipment. Better equipment gets more time. It's like the mowers. If we get new mowers next year for these old ones, we believe we can cut more grass in less time. So, some of that is the efficiencies of the equipment as well, so... But I will stand up here and say at some point, if something comes up and we can't handle it, that's my job to say, I can, we can.
Sir, you kind of touched on maintenance and I guess I was thinking about some of the current parks and recreational facilities we have. Specifically, one comes to mind, the Horace Mann area. Given that I've heard reports that we are leaking a tremendous amount of water out of that facility currently, do you think it would be worth the investment currently to improve and help facilitate stopping that leaking and keep it up to par? Would that, would that return any sort of long-term savings? And what would that take to do that?
It would take a demolition of the existing pool and a rebuild of a brand-new facility to stop that leak. Going into a Duncan, is it a 40-year pool or 30? Was built in 1970, no amount of fix is going to fix that. It's one of those things that you go in and fix this leak and then it pops out over here. So, just to rebuild on that whole thing is probably the only thing that would be worth that site.
Okay. Thank you for that information.
Anything else for Parks?
Say, Jerry, 11% of the expenditures in the 2011 budget come from the parks. How does that compare to other parks across the nation? Or other city budgets, I should say?
Would you repeat that?
11%, according to this, to the mayor's PowerPoint presentation, is 4.981 million dollars is spent in Parks and Rec. And that's 11% of the total budget. How does that compare to across the nation?
And I think we did that, we got that information last year during this time, but I will have to say that for a community the same size with the same land acreage, Rapid City's Parks budget is probably in the neighborhood of 45 or 50% lower than the average nation. And the reason is, is comparing apples to apples, most communities, 99% of the communities in the United States takes care of all the soccer fields and baseball fields and all that. We don't. City councils, way in the past, were very smart to lease those facilities out, which keeps our manpower and equipment a lot lower than 99% of the communities in the United States. So, we, I've looked, I can't find another community that does it like we do, so it's real hard to compare and answer that question. There are a couple of them out there, but it's, even with that, it's different.
So, okay, and I appreciate that, yeah, that is, that's a good idea to lease them out to these volunteer organizations. I mean, that's, that's an area that seems to be slipping across our city and some of the cities nationwide is actually having the volunteers take care of some of these items and leasing out the parks, the soccer, softball, those types of things makes a lot of sense. Looks like your budget's being cut about a total of 4.2%, which is roughly about $218,000, is that correct?
I believe that is correct, sir.
And I just, I'm just going to make a little point here about, over the last, I'd say, five to 10 years, the city has about a million dollars in revenues that they don't collect from tax districts, which equates to about a million bucks a year in revenue to the city, which 11% of that's about $110,000 or about half of what your budget's being cut, so I just wanted to put that plug in. Thank you.
When you spend about $900,000 in temporary wages, would we maybe save some money in some of those areas by doing some public-private partnerships? After seeing the total of, and that's maybe just a comment, not a, not a question, but again, you have almost a million dollars that you're spending on temporary wages, so...
Dave?
Thank you, Ron. Pauline, before you leave, this is really probably more of yours. Sorry.
That's okay.
On the electricity on Parks and Rec. I gotta get over a line, excuse me. The, I'm seeing an 11% increase, I just wanted to clarify, is that another issue where we've increased it in the past, so we're only increasing 11 this year? Or is that more of an issue where you feel the parks will be one of those entities that will get a smaller rate hike than some of the other? I'm, I'm still struggling with where we're getting, where this user within the city is going to have a bigger hike than a different user, and I guess that's, I'm struggling why I'm seeing different percentages on different entities inside the city.
And that's probably because it, each cost center, it depends on what the 2009 actual was, and then what they budgeted for 2010. We requested a 10% increase in 2010, some may have actually put in more, some may have put in less, but what, what we did when we were going through it with the mayor is we added, basically, we took 2009 actuals, add 10%, and add 10% again. This is not quite that amount, we do not, we do not have the determination in our hands as to what constitutes a, a smaller account user versus of the large account, user account. That information has not been provided to me at this time. I, I do know that I have met with Mr. Keck, and he, like, the swim center is a higher user, I do know that, or the, but as far as the parks themselves, I would think that with the, the streetlights, they might be a, a lower user than what the swim center is, obviously. But that was not taken into account, we just tried to base it off of 2009, make sure we had a 20% coverage.
So, across the board, you took 2009 plus 10 for 2010, plus 10 in 2011. So if, if for instance, Jerry had taken for 2010, had taken 2009 plus 20, you would have been at a zero change for 2011?
Correct.
And if he had been at 2009 plus 25, you would have had a 5% decrease, or 6, whatever?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm clear on how that's coming out. I mean, basically, we're, we're 2009 plus 10, 2010 plus 10 for 2011, and ultimately, netting out at about a 19% hike.
Correct.
Over 2009. And that, that, that rule will hold, pretty much every one of these that we look at will hold true.
That's correct. If, if we didn't see at least a 10% increase that the department heads gave us, that's when we really took a look at it, and, and to make sure that we had the 20% coverage over 2009. We may not have specifically calculated it, but that was the general rule of thumb, is we kind of glanced to make sure they have at least 10%, if not, then we, then we do the 20 over 2009.
Is, and this is kind of away from Jerry, from Jerry's budgets, but it's really overall, is there any issue with that, that, that you foresee where that might not be enough? I mean, we, we all are speculating at 19%, and obviously, you've worked with Mr. Keck on this, but...
I actually...
Because ultimately, that's what we're all looking at today, is, are we setting enough aside so that when this thing may or may not come through, at whatever rate it may or may not come through, do we have enough for Jerry to be able to still pay his employees after he pays his electric bills?
I, I believe we do. I actually double-checked my email from Mr. Keck, and, and his email said 19.4%, so I apologize that I've been saying 19.8. It was, that was off, trying to do it off memory. He did indicate also, right now, we have a cost adjustment included in this calculation into the 19.4%, and that will be removed, according to his email, after March of 2011. So actually, the rate will decrease a little bit in April of 2011, because that adjustment will be removed as well.
Okay. Sorry to use you as a guinea pig, Jerry. Thanks. Thank you, Ron.
Sam?
I think the question by Alderman Hancock regarding the public-private partnership is a good one. Jerry, was it, right after you came on board, there was a contract that was set up with Black Hills Workshop? And, and what is that, has that increased year over year? And is there room to increase that even more to, in terms of moving some of the temporary wages into, into that?
It, it was, and I think we started that contract, I believe, around 2005.
If you just want to bring it to the recap, that's fine, I don't...
The contract, actually, to begin with, I think, was right around $95,000 with Black Hills Workshop. And the next year, which is unheard of, when they came back to negotiate the contract, they said, well, it's not taking us all that, so we're going to decrease it to 70-some-thousand. So they, they actually came to us and said, it didn't take them as much time as they thought it was going to, so they asked to decrease the contract. So it's in the, I believe, in the high 70s? Okay. I believe it's in the high 70s right now. It has increased a couple times by $2,000 or $3,000, just because of added-on work that we have done. Is there any room in the budget to increase that further? Probably not. As we do, like Vicky Powers Park, who has a restroom, that has been added on, we, we increased that contract last year for that restroom service. I don't anticipate we have anything left to increase with, except, I mean, we could go in to look at janitorial services. However, I think we're pretty efficient in janitorial services for the ice arena and the swim center right now. I think the contract would probably cost us a little more than our temporary salaries. Because some of that also handles with full-time job people as well, so...
Could you just bring, just a brief summary of that to the recap, and see if there's any, any room there to move some of the temporary wages into, into those types of partnerships?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jerry? Run, Jerry, run, get out of here. We're going to take a 15-minute break, and then we'll start again.
And I spoke and one of them said I didn't need to, but they said, no, we can have her. And that was four years ago. So it was before all this, but they were good to me.
It's a good break.
And today, if I go in, I can go in there and say that.
That was a good break.
I've had a couple of things where I've shown people the process, so I go and see. They were good to me. So that's why I said that you have a right to sit up front, because they would have made me sit differently. Like you said, if I had to talk too much, but we're allowed to ask questions.
A delayed day.
You have to be at the time of day.
He's a natural born salesman.
Well, just talking to him, because one of them had something with me.
You start the problem.
No, I actually, they have a problem, I talked to one of them back then, and I can't remember what was the issue. We haven't remembered, it's been four years, but I talked to him, and he was really cool. I'm not politically telling you anything. If I was politically saying, I think you should vote for this, I said, I just wanted to understand.
Kevin and the company, are you ready?
The verities and how they work in that country.
Ready, Jim? Turn the lights down so you can take a nap.
And the other ones appreciate it. So when I came up front, I knew what was done.
Well, thank you. I just have a couple of comments, a real brief presentation, and then open it up for question and answer. And Barb and Andy put out some handouts on your table that aren't part of the presentation. Community Development Division, which I could spend a half hour talking about all the things Barb does throughout the year, so we've incorporated into a handout, because she stays very busy. But one thing that I did want to highlight, that is, the other handout is a Rapid City offender reentry program. And that's working with people that are released from prison and coming back into the community. And in this last year, you all approved us participating with the Department Corrections on the Second Chance Act grant, which is a federal grant. And we have a reentry coordinator, Lisa Swallow, and currently we have thirty-three people participating in that program. And the goal is to remove some of the barriers when they come out of prison and hit the street. Some things as simple as being able to get a driver's license, so they can have an ID to get a job, public transportation, housing, et cetera. So rather than, a way to reduce recidivism rate. So I mentioned that, those are the handouts. And if you have questions on Barb's programs or their reentry program, between Barb and I, we can try and answer those. Electronic employee files, there's been a lot of discussion about going paperless. Here in the last month or so, we completed this project, and what we've done is we've taken all of our employee personnel files citywide. Well, at least in HR at this point, about seven hundred and fifty of them, converted them electronically. We cleaned up the files, scanned them in, and then they're in this electronic format now where we can go in and search them. And we're working on the permissions where the supervisor for the employees can look at them, and eventually so the employee can go in and look at them as well. At least in a controlled setting, go into their supervisor's office, they can pull up their file and look at it. This did allow us to get rid of three file cabinets, and hopefully more in the future. And it's a neat feature, it does help with centralization of our processes, and it helps with quality control. Right now, and again, this is the second phase of the process, like the police department, for example, they have some files over there as well. So we'll get their files, get them consolidated into ours, so we go through kind of a sanitization process, organizing the files, scan it in, and then tag it to the particular folder where it belongs. And in the future, once we're all scanned in, then the departments will scan and say they give a employee a letter commendation or employee performance evaluation, they can scan it, and it comes to us, and then we say, yes, it can go to the file, and where it goes. So it provides some centralization and quality control. In particular, like in talking to Jason from the city attorney's office, we get a lawsuit, and they want a copy of an HR file. This way, it's in one point. We can give it to them electronically, we can print it off, you know, however they request it. And again, the remote access, so the outlying departments that aren't in this building can have access to the HR file, just like we can. Code enforcement, and again, as you know, Community Resources has kind of an eclectic mix, so we'll go through those. Code enforcement inspections in the last year, as you know, Barb is now the direct supervisor of the code enforcement officers that are over in the Milo Barber building. This gives you some idea of the level of activity and the type of complaints we get. You know, grass and weeds, vegetation stuff is obviously the highest. It says total inspections, four thousand fifty-four. Most times, there's one violation at a residence, but you could go to one residence and write it up for three different violations, so there's some duplication there. But what's not reflected here is you might go to one residence one time, and it solves the problems, or you might have to go there six, seven, eight times to solve the problem. And this just reflects, you know, one visit, doesn't reflect the multiple visits. Then we've been working with the GIS to look at code violation reports, and you know, where are our hotspots, so to speak. And Don Jarvan put together just kind of a density map, and this gives you an idea of, you know, where most of our code enforcement activity is located in the city. And this data, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this was last year's data, not this most current data?
That's correct.
But if we did a current map, it would, I think it'd be, reflect basically the same level of activity in those areas. And there's another map we're working on with GIS, Don Jarvan built this one. You can see the little icons, a tree for overhanging branches, a little piece of grass weed looking thing for vegetation, a vehicle for a nuisance complaint. Then you can actually click on the violation, and it'll pull, on that icon, it'll pull up the address and complaint there. So just something we're using internally, maybe at some point, it's something we could put out on a public website, but it's just evolving now. Sign code enforcement, the bar graph's a little misleading, it only increased by six, it's just the bar graph that was used. Andy's here, he can answer the questions about sign code enforcement. Again, this is Riglight the Billboards and Other Off-Premises Signs, works with Brad and Growth Management. So again, from 2010 to 2009, that's just an increase of six. Rapid map usage, just a plug for GIS, this is, you know, sort of our high use services that we provide. Most of you are familiar with rapid maps, I won't bore you with the details, but it does get a lot of use, and it's a valuable service for the community, and it's a joint city-county project. There you go, this one, this one will make your head hurt, it's a topology of our network. Basically, it shows the complexity of our network for the city. We serve twenty-six different locations throughout the city. And I'm going to spend just a few minutes on three or four IT slides, because it leads up to my final point before I close and open it up for discussions about some consolidation that's being kicked about. If you want me to try and explain this, you're asking the wrong person. I would get one of our network people and bring them in here, and they could explain it to you, but it's, most of it's beyond my capability. But it is a very complex system, the city's made a significant investment in infrastructure. Mayor Hanks found us about a half million dollars the first year he was here when he started the IT consolidation. That went a long ways towards fixing some of the infrastructure issues, and now we just need to keep building on what we have and maintain it. Help desk tickets, these are what the technicians do, and this isn't a reflection of all their activity, it's a reflection of some of their activity. If you send in a help desk ticket requesting something's wrong with my computer, or my printer, whatever, the techs respond. And this just shows you the level of activity for the techs. Customer satisfaction, IT is very proactive. If you send in a help desk ticket, then when it's done and closed, you get a little email back saying, hey, would you fill out a quick, how many question survey, Russ, three, four?
Just a few.
Yeah, just three or four question survey, how'd we do on our customer support? So we survey our customers, which are city staff, with every help desk ticket they send in, and we're pleased with the satisfaction rate we have. You look at resolution type, response time, customer service, so we're pleased that we're meeting their needs. My last point, IT organizational chart. If you look at, oh, GIS, and then one technician at the library, those are jointly shared or jointly funded by city and county dollars. If you look at the brown, those are supervised by our current, by our IT officer, and then the blue ones are city-funded. Here in the last few weeks, the chairman of the county commission, Ethan Schmidt, sent us a letter and requested a meeting to talk about consolidation of city-county IT services. It's very conceptual, just thrown it on the table for discussion. But the request last year from the council, when we talked about some IT consolidations, was to bring these things up during the budget process, so we're aware of them moving forward throughout the year. So that's the purpose of bringing this up. You know, where that goes, I don't know. I think there's some merit in exploring it. The mayor's marching orders are, it has to be a win-win for both, a legitimate win-win. I'm kind of in a unique situation, I have a foot in both camps at this point, and I vested interest in two perspectives. But we're going to have that meeting on the tenth with one or two of the county commissioners, some of the IT staff, and just see where it goes, but I'm making you aware of it. And I put this organizational chart up to illustrate that, actually, we're fairly integrated already. And with that, I'll answer questions.
First off, Mr. Tome, I want to send a special thank you to Mr. Tynesfold and his department and the wonderful work they've done at the library. I think that is absolutely fabulous, I've gotten to use those services, and again, I will just commend you on all your efforts that you've put into that. I know you've put in a lot of long hours and hard work into that, seen you going back and forth many a time. I also do have a question with the current, the presentation you just showed us, where can we access that, just for our own information, again?
I can get you a copy if you'd like.
I would appreciate that. The other thing that you brought up, the county-city cooperation, and I was thinking back on the network topology that you showed me, and this may be a better question for Mr. Tynesfold, but what, I mean, what would it take to do that? Would that be an easy process, or would that be fairly complex to integrate the two with what we have currently?
You'll take the question, Mr.?
To answer your question...
then the blue ones are city-funded. Here in the last few weeks, the chairman of the county commission, Ethan Schmidt, sent us a letter and requested a meeting to talk about consolidation of city-county IT services. It's very conceptual, just thrown it on the table for discussion. But the request last year from the council, when we talked about some IT consolidations, was to bring these things up during the budget process, so we're aware of them moving forward throughout the year. So that's the purpose of bringing this up. You know, where that goes, I don't know. Um, I think there's some merit in exploring it. The mayor's marching orders are, it has to be a win-win for both, a legitimate win-win. I'm kind of in a unique situation, I have a foot in both camps at this point, and, um, vested in interest in two perspectives, but, uh, we're gonna have that meeting on the tenth with one or two of the county commissioners, some of the IT staff, and, um, just see where it goes, but I'm making you aware of it. And, uh, we're, and I put this organizational chart up to illustrate that, actually, we're fairly integrated already. And with that, I'll answer questions.
Uh, first off, Mr. Tome, I wanna send a special thank you to Mr. Tynesfold and his department and the wonderful work they've done at the library. I, I think that is absolutely fabulous. I've gotten to use those services. And again, I will just commend you on all your efforts that you've put into that. I know you've put in a lot of long hours and, uh, hard work into that. Seen you going back and forth many a time. I also do have a question with, uh, the current, um, the presentation you just showed us, where can we access that, just to, for our own information, again?
I can get you a copy if you'd like.
I, I would appreciate that. Um, the other thing that you brought up, the county-city cooperation, and I was thinking back on the network topology that you showed me, and this may be a better, uh, question for Mr. Tynesfold, but, um, what, I mean, what would it take to do that? Would be, that be an easy process, or would that be fairly complex to integrate the two with what we have currently?
You'll take the question, Russ?
To answer your question, it would be both. In one sense, it would be easy, in another sense, it would be complex. They're, they're complex systems, so, so there is a lot of work that it would be required. But right now, we share a, a lot of network components. For example, we all share the same top-level domain, so we're already at a good starting point for doing that, but there would be a lot of work to be done.
I appreciate that, and I guess that leads me into what, I guess, would be more pertinent for the discussion at the budget here. Would there be any cost savings in doing that?
If I can. Um, one of the things, and we've, we've just started looking at the possibility of, of basically having an integrated IT between the city and the county. One of the things that needs to be discussed is, is really the quality of the IT at the county at this point. I would, I will tell you, the conversations I've had with the county commissioners is they have some concerns over the, the quality of their IT structure. That's one of the reasons they're coming to the city, hoping to look at the possibilities of consolidating. Um, as far as potential savings, one of the things that they'll be having a meeting and the discussion will be about is the fact that if indeed the, the county is serious about looking at doing a, a joint project, um, they've already been told, uh, the city is not gonna subsidize your IT program. If there are capital needs to bring your system up to speed to match ours, you're gonna have to make that investment. Um, you know, whether it's virtual servers, whether it's the actual broadband width, all those things, you're gonna have to bring those up to our standard. And, and Kevin, I think, hit it right ahead when I said this has to be a win-win at no cost to the city. We're not going to do this unless there is a benefit for the city and the county. If this is bas- basically picking up their responsibility and just basically putting more employees' work at the city and there's no benefit to the city, it serves no purpose. If indeed, uh, we can save some money or we can be more efficient with our IT, uh, with our IT by basically consolidating, we'll take a look at it. But, uh, at this point, Russ, I didn't mean to steal your, your thunder, but I think, uh, I'm not sure we really have the answers quite yet.
Sure.
But the one thing that, that we're very serious about is, is we'll take a look at it, but only if it's in the best interest of our constituents and those constituencies are the city, uh, Rapid City citizens, so.
Thank you, Mayor. I truly appreciate that. I, that's really the direction I'm looking at as well. Um, and thank you, I anticipate future discussion on that topic.
Any other questions for Kevin? The que- the question was, is council leadership gonna be at that meeting? I know he'd sent, they'd sent me a letter, and I think this, this is just an initial discussion, is about Mayor.
This is basically at the staff level. Also, this is more of a, to be honest with you, this is actually above my head, talking about basically the, the systems they have in place and so forth. I think eventually, if indeed it makes sense to actually have discussions as far as the policy of whether or not we're gonna move forward, at that point, um, council leadership and myself will get involved. But right now, it's really at the technical level and, and I didn't plan on going to the meeting, cause quite honestly, I'd probably be lost too.
And again, the reason I brought it up is, last year, we had a discussion about some IT consolidation, the council requested that we talk about it during the budget, and that's why I brought it up at this point.
Any other questions for Kevin? What, what the budget code is?
Uh, I mean, I haven't been able to bring it up, so.
Couldn't hear the question?
What's?
This would be the total community resources budget in the general fund. That would include IT, HR, code enforcement, GIS.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Um, what line number is your community development in there?
That's a separate budget from the general fund.
You have an idea of it, how much was cut, or if any?
Community development, the tab is zero-nine-three-zero. There is a decrease of nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars on that one. And part of that is because we can charge part of, um, Barb Garcia's salaries to the re, to the reen- and Wendy's salaries to the reentry program. So there's an interdepartmental charge now, where before you did not see that. So that's why they're showing a decrease of that amount, for the majority of it. Sorry, she's correcting me.
Um, actually, we get halftime position out of the general funds. That is where we charge Wendy's halftime position to. The reentry person is charged a hundred percent to the state grant. Um, my, what we do is we charge part of mine and Wendy's to the general fund, because I can't oversee non-CDBG grant projects using the CDBG grant. So we take a small amount of mine for the supervision of code enforcement out of the general.
Okay, 'cause the ability to get grants can be very beneficial to a community, so I just wanted to make sure it wasn't being cut or something.
Any other questions for, did you have a comment, Barb?
Um, for those who are new, let me just explain that on our grant, um, the CDBG grant that we get from HUD each year allows us to use twenty percent of that grant for, um, administration and oversight of the grant. That twenty percent is running at about, um, just right at a hundred thousand this year. My actual budget is about a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. We have been operating, covering that shortage of thirty-five thousand with funds that were left over from when, uh, Bonnie Hughes left the city for two years. The position was not filled, but the money was set aside to use, so we've been using that up to cover the budget. According to our figures, with the general fund half-position, the reentry grant covering itself, and our grant that we got this year, I can operate through 2011 with this budget. But at the end of that period, uh, we will be short based on the grant, cause I'm a hundred percent grant right now. And at that point, we'll run out of all of our surplus, and at that next year, you will have to determine whether to provide additional, um, funds. But right now, with what we have, we can cover us all the way through 2011 if this budget is approved.
Any other questions on, to Kevin, Jordan?
This actually just deals with the, uh, budget and, uh, I suppose it could be just generally, but I'm not really quite sure, under the contingencies, actually, under the community resources there, um, or community, uh, development. Uh, it has nine-thousand dollars, but I'm just curious, what are, are, uh, not nine-thousand, but three-thousand under other expenses? What does, what does that include? I'm just curious, what is a contingency and what would other expenses be?
What line are you on?
Uh, nine-thousand under, let me scroll up here, under forty-five-hundred, forty-five-hundred under other expenses.
Cost center though, cause this is community development, it's four-hundred thousand.
Behavior management. Or down.
Yeah, I, I guess it says, uh, AAR-A, community development.
Um, AAR-A, the AAR-A is the special grant that we received for using the stimulus money, and that's a one-time allocation. Um, and we had, I don't remember there being a nine-thousand contingency.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I confused my numbers. It was three-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one. There we go, right there.
Oh, that's actually a, a grant that was allocated to behavior management systems, and that was for one of their rehab projects under that grant.
Oh, great. And, uh, just from my information, as we go through the budget, what are contingencies, uh, what does that include generally?
Okay, occasionally in our community development, um, what happens is, we have to set our budget guessing how much the Congress is going to give us each year. I have to turn in my budget by February fifteenth. Congress never notifies us of how much we are, they are actually allocating to the block grants until April or May timeframe. So we have to kind of guess, and we usually, I use an estimation of this year's amount minus about six percent, because every year, new cities are added. So we guess and we put it in, and then after the fact, we find out how much we're getting. We may get less and we may get more. This particular year, we got more. So, um, we didn't allocate out all of the funds, cause we didn't know we were getting that extra amount. So we usually go ahead and get it going and we put that amount in a contingency for any new projects that might pop up during the year or, um, over cost overruns on a construction project that we're doing that we may wanna allocate some. So we set it aside as contingency and, um, invite people to, you know, ask for those funds if they wish, or at the end of the year, we'll offer another round of funding so that we can use up any that wasn't used that year.
Okay, so it's just my understanding that that's kind of a cushion, uh, for anything that may come up?
Yes, but in, in this particular case, that three-six-six-one is not a contingency. That is how much we actually allocated for a specific project on, on the particular one we asked about.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
If you look at the nine-thirty tab over here, you're gonna, you're gonna show four-hundred-thousand dollars in contingency. And with Barb's funding, as well as the subsidy cost center, which I'll talk to you about later, we don't know how those funds are going to get allocated, because there's an application process put in place. So until we allocate those funds out to the individuals, it goes into the contingency line item, so that way, it's in the budget and it's there for us to allocate out as part of the application process. So it starts there, but then when, once the, the grants are given to the different entities, then we, we go back and supplement it out of the contingency line item into the line items for those that are actually getting the funding.
And they'll look at your funds that are below the forty-five-sixty on down. Those are the various entities.
I'm wondering then if we actually need to weigh with factors.
And it's actually up here, it's above.
Yeah. So just a quick question with that. So, um, if those allocations aren't always set, I'm assuming there's a little bit of latitude in which organizations get that as we proceed on through the year?
Um, there's specific guidelines under which the money has to be given out. And so in the application process, um, they get evaluated based on meeting those needs and high priority needs of the city. First, I put together spreadsheets for the subsidy committee. The subsidy committee is then called to review the applications and they make a recommendation to full council. On the subsidy committee are the mayor, two council members, the president and vice president, finance officers, and, uh, Renee Parker from the United Way as an outside person who's also funding many of the agencies. So, um, the subsidy committee all comes together, looks at the applications received, do they meet the criteria, and then they determine how much, based on how much we have to give out.
Well, thank you, that was very informative. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin? Thanks, Kevin.
I am ready. I am going to first go over the general fund, part of the finance that includes all the, the, uh, tasks that we do downstairs, which is the administrative side, it's the accounting side, the, the, I'll say the cashier's office, thank you, I'm lacking words tonight, but the largest part, first I'll start with in total. We are actually down eleven percent in total. For a total of eighty-thousand-ninety-nine. Part of that is that five percent that we get credited back for interdepartmental charges. The other large chunks, you'll see a decrease of seven percent in the salary line items for fifty-one-thousand-five-thirty-eight. That is, um, obviously, Mr. Preston has retired. I have replaced him at a much lower wage than we replaced me again at a, a lower wage, so that is where, that those funds are coming from. And with a lower salary, we decrease our benefits as well. The other line item that you'll see the large decrease would be in publications. In discussing this with the mayor, a lot of our costs and finance are staff costs. We, we, we have to have a lot of people in our office so we can get the job done that that we, that we're required to do. Right now, the minutes that are published are more than what is required by law. We are going to look at trying to, um, go back to not, to shortening the minutes so that we can have a lower publishing cost. The, the law requires that we publish action minutes. I'm not suggesting we go totally to action, but the, there'll be a more limited amount of discussion items within those minutes. So that's, that's where that is. We do see a large increase in the election line item, which is forty-two-ninety-one. That's a twenty-four-thousand-dollar increase. In the past, if you look at what we've actually spent, it's been right around sixty-thousand dollars, because it seems like we have more than one election every year. Next year being, not only will we have a council election, but we'll have a mayoral election, more than likely, we will have a runoff. So we are budgeting for the two elections in 2011. And those are the majority of our cuts and our changes. If you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Jordan?
Misassumption, there was, uh, I asked you previously in a, uh, email about publication. I was just wondering, is there any sort of latitude in the law of actually publishing online versus an actual printed version, um, which may save us on cost? Is that a possibility?
We, obviously, we already have our minutes online on our, the city website. However, state statute says that the city has to designate an official newspaper for that city. It has to be, reside within the county that the city is in, and we have to publish all of our information in there. That is a requirement by law. We have requested, and it's been on the South Dakota Municipal League policy, to change that so that we could have the option of publishing them online only, and they have taken it to the legislation and it has not passed. Because as much as we lobby, the journalists lobby just as much.
Sure. I, I guess what I'm curious about is the Rapid City Journal, I guess for our particular instance, uh, that would be them. So, given that they have a, a website dedicated to their services alone, is it possible, for example, during, uh, this last election, I noticed some of the candidates actually advertised their message on the Rapid City Journal or paid for publications specifically only online through their services? And I'm wondering, uh...
I'm guilty.
Thanks, Deb. Um, I, I'm just wondering if, if it would be cheaper if we could just publish through the newspaper only online and if that would be a cost savings and if that, if that's a possibility?
At this time, I don't believe it is a possibility, but I will double-check for you.
Thank you.
Uh, does the publication have to be the journal? Or it could be like the Quick Quarter or something like that?
We are required, we have time limits requirements as far as publishing our information, whether it be the city council minutes or it's a notice of public hearing. We are, some of those publications may not be printed often enough for what we need to get done to get the, the city business done. It may slow up how we do it, but as long as the newspaper resides in the county, we can publish with them.
And I assume they probably give us a, a really good rate compared to average citizens, or is it the same rate?
I believe actually, state statute sets out what the rate can be for the legal publications. They are now, one of the steps that was made last year with us lobbying to get this, so we can publish online, was that the newspapers are now required to print a cost of each time that it's published. So you'll notice at the bottom of legal publications, it'll say what it costs to publish that. So we are taking steps, just not as quickly or as largely as we would like.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so?
Thank you, I appreciate, uh, this, this discussion. Um, I, uh, if, if there are lobbying efforts next year by, uh, agents of the city, I hope it comes through the council first for a discussion, because I do not support, um, not using the newspaper on, on record. Um, I, I think that having, uh, the minutes online on city servers only is a bad idea.
I think that having the minutes online on city servers only is a bad idea. There was an incident once back in 2004 regarding a development issue. It was a long time ago, but there were, there was some question as to what was said in the minutes, and there was information that couldn't be found. And ever since, ever since then, there's been a request, and that's been granted by the city finance office, to keep more complete minutes. And so, I will be opposed to any effort whatsoever to reduce the publishing, or to eliminate publishing of minutes with the newspaper. I mean, maybe, maybe at some point, we could move it to a newspaper server, but, and I will not support the concept of eliminating third-party, third-party keeping of those, or third-party keeping of those minutes. I mean, they need to be kept by a third, a third-party, preferably in print form if possible, secondarily in, in soft copy form if it becomes too expensive. But, I think we need to find a way to, to, to make sure that the newspaper, either online or print edition, continues to be a part of, of the minutes. And so, I'm going to ask that there not be an effort to lobby unless it comes through the council to eliminate publishing of minutes. I think that would just be just a terrible mistake. I also think that shortening the minutes, that should be a discussion that comes in front of the council. There was, my first couple of years on the council, there was some real debates on, on concerns over what was said in the minutes, and things that were, you know, possibly being left out or put in. And we have very comprehensive minutes now, and they're very good for the most part. And so, I, I think that there are other ways to cut costs than to, than to give the, our constituents the short straw on, on information, on public information that they should have access to. Thank you.
Can I?
Go ahead, man.
Thank you. Just a reminder, you know, there again, it's very important, and we talk about it all the time, as far as being transparent and open. One of the things that the city of Rapid City just spent an awful lot of money on is doing exactly that. We just put online all the council meetings, all the legal and finance meetings, and so not only do you have access to minutes, now you can actually go on and listen and see the streaming video of all of our meetings. That was one of the reasons that we discussed about trying to pull back a little bit on the, on the, when I say details, some of the, the sheer number of words that we actually have to print gets expensive. So, if we, by putting it online, in my mind, quite honestly, we provided a easier-to-use service, a more complete service, because they can actually watch it and listen to it verbatim. And on top of that, there's actually indexing through our Graniskit system. So, if you actually go to a meeting, if you go to Monday's meeting, and you want to look at a specific item, you go to the agenda, you click on it, and it actually forwards the Graniskit program to that spot, and you can actually literally listen to it online. So, I understand the concern, but I don't think that by, by condensing our minutes that are published, I don't think that, in my mind, that has reduced the public's access. I think that we've taken a different venue, a different course, a different path to provide more detail, and in this case, literally a streaming video that is accessible to everyone. And not only are we doing that to the current meetings, we're going back in the archived meetings, we're pulling those off DVDs and actually placing them online. So, I think at this point, Jim, how far back are we? Are you listening?
How many years back are we so far? We started at the city council, and we're back to 2006. Once we get those back to about 2000, which is what we have, then we'll start with the legal and finance and the others.
Yep. So, the goal is to actually get all the meetings basically out of archives, put them online. And now, the other thing to keep in mind, not only do we archive, the Rapid City Library actually has DVDs of all the meetings and all the minutes going back, and actually before, I mean, they go way back. So, our goal is to actually go back to 2000, get everything online, so you can literally go back and listen to any council meeting, any legal and finance, any public works meeting that you want. As a matter of fact, I'll give you a best example. Everything that you've said tonight will be archived. This is a special council meeting. So, so just a reminder, remember, everything you say from this point forward can be pulled up on the internet. And so, just a reminder, be very careful, make sure your mic's turned off. So...
Can I follow up with what, one other thing that Sam said, though? Please, Mr. Quaker said. As far as the lobbying efforts, those, as far as I know, I did not go to lobby. This all actually started taking place while I still was not even employed with the city of Rapid City. The reason that the municipal league took this on, and the committee, the resolution committee, thought it was important, is there are a lot of small communities that simply either they do not have a newspaper within their county, or they just flat-out cannot afford to be publishing everything that's required to be published, because they just have such a small budget. So, as far as I know, nobody from Rapid City, and I could be wrong, but no, went to actually go lobby for it.
Go ahead, Sam.
I'll yield to Alderman Mason, and I'll like to speak in a bit.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, thank you for reading me my rights. I realize that everything I say can and will be used against me in the Rapid City Journal.
Now until the future, yeah.
But, I would like to clarify that in no way am I asking that we don't have that checks and balance between the government and the city, but as a, as a duty, a fiduciary duty to the citizens of Rapid City, it is my responsibility with the oath that I took to try and save them as much money as I can. And I think with, prime example, the Rapid City Journal over the years, you may have noticed that their paper size has actually decreased in the actual size of the paper over the years, and that they've actually expanded their online newspaper. This is a trend, not only in business, but it should be a trend for government as well because it's a cost savings benefit. I think that has been shown repeatedly throughout the industry, and I guess I want to explore that option. So, I do not want this, my question to be convoluted in any way, frankly, and I just want to clarify that on the record. Thank you.
Sam, you want to speak now, or you want to? Jeff Hatcock?
So, the publishing is the actual 71, and the publications is 71, too?
That's the total line item. The line number 50 is a total.
Line number 50. Say...
4230. It's got the title, the actual line item, and then a total. There's only one line item within that grouping, so it's...
So, what's the total that we spend on publications and publishing then? 71?
In 2009, it was 71,14568.
Okay. Does anybody remember the conversation with, when Bob Hurlbut, if anybody, maybe the staff, he was here, and he was talking about some of the things that we could do differently than just publishing on the newspaper? And I, I don't remember, but it, there were some really good ideas back then, and I don't know why we didn't end up doing that. But, same thing, it's not like you want to not hit all avenues and be fair to all avenues in one sense, because some people read the newspaper, some people read it online. It's just what's going to hit both of those and still, in Jordan's case, have a cost savings, and in Sam's case, still get to the constituents. So, I think there's a, there's a, there's a line that we could probably do what Sam is saying and do what Jordan is saying as well, and then still save the taxpayers money. So, I think there's a, there's a balance there, so...
Sam, go ahead.
I think there's been, there's three, really three discussions here that we're kind of having all at the same time. One is the idea of publishing in, in print, in third-party media, like we have been for many years. The other would be, as Alderman Mason said, as I understand it, would be to try to reduce some costs by publishing on a third-party paid website, paid servers, like through Rapid City Journal's website. And then, the last would be, as I understand Mayor Hanks's comments, would be to publish only on the city's website. And that's, that's what my concern is. And I, you know, I have floppy disks somewhere that are 12-years-old that I can't use anymore. But, I have a newspaper from 1818 that's been in my family for a long time that's still readable. And so, I think option number one is to find a way to keep publishing in, in print media. And then, along with that, it would be great if we could make that text searchable on the Journal's website. But, I think the idea of, of cutting out third-party paid media is a very bad idea, and because there's a check and balance in government, and we need to make sure that check and balance doesn't go away. And I do not want to be in a situation where someone is lobbying in peer on Rapid City's behalf, trying to reduce, you know, to reduce publishing costs by publishing only on the city's website. I think that that's a mistake. And I want it very clear that there's three types of things we're talking about here, and I don't want the discussion confused. Thank you.
Mr. Kroger?
Mayor?
My apologies, Mr. Quaker. I'm not sure anybody in the room heard me say that I was advocating to only publish it on our website. That is not what I said. What I said was, we're looking at reducing the sheer volume of print by condensing the minutes that are going into the Journal. Instead of doing a more of a verbatim process, dealing more with motions and the votes and so forth. In no way was I advocating, and no, and matter of fact, there was no mention of me even suggesting that we not print in the Journal. That's why you see $60,000 up there, because that's exactly what that does. It meets state's requirements. The other thing is, is I've been around long enough, and I was in the legislature, to know what you suggested that I said isn't legally possible. We have to publish in the paper. So, I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Dave Davis first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a reminder that we are here for a budget hearing, and if we have issues that we may or may not want to change in the future, I think we need to look at those as far as changing those types of things that may or may not want to go to peer. But, we have a publication line item that was under discussion. Let's discuss the dollar amount on the publication line item and move on with the budget, please.
Thank you, Dave. Sam?
Thank you. I would just like to see further information brought forward, and what plan there is for consolidating the minutes for this coming year. I believe that that's a policy decision to reduce, to reduce publishing and reduce the information that's in the minutes. And I'm, I'm opposed to that, and I think that needs to be discussed before, before that's done. And that's been my concern, is reducing the information that's in the minutes. I don't think that we should, that we should be doing that without a, a full discussion and a vote by the city council.
Further discussion, or further, is there any other questions for Pauline on her budget here? New if not?
That was strictly the general fund.
Okay.
We are also oversee the occupancy tax that Michelle Lince brought up during the CBB discussion. As part of the ordinance that the city council established, the city keeps 1 percent of whatever is collected for administrative costs. 99 percent of whatever is collected goes to the CBB. In 2009, we actually sent them $1.2 million, and I want to point out that where the money was budgeted should actually be moved up to the 4225 line item. Right now, it's down under 4530 for $1,253,931, which is a no-growth from 2010 budget. Again, this is one that if we collect more, they get more. If we collect less, in this instance, they get less. They just get the 99 percent of whatever is collected on the $2 per bed, or per room, per night on those hotels that are in the system for the bid tax. One other budget that we have is the RSVP budget, and much like the community development budget, it is grant-funded. The grant amount has been decreasing in the past, or continues to decrease, and I don't, we don't have that one, we typically don't go over that, because it is all grant-funded. But, just something to keep in mind, that, too, the grant funding is decreasing to the point where there may need to be some tough decisions as to if the city council wants to continue with that program, there may have to be some funding from other sources within the city. So, just to keep that in mind. The last budget I have is the subsidies budget. This budget has not changed from 2009, 10, and 11. It has all remained the same. For, and half of that actually goes to the Allied Arts. They have a committee that takes application, and they allocate that money out to the Arts and Humanities. The other $100,000, we have a subsidy committee within the city that reviews applications that we receive for the health side of things, the, the health and safety. Those letters actually went out, or will go out next week, for the people that typically apply for the $100,000 that the city allocates the money to, or the committee will review those applications. Both of those, once, once the recommendations are done, those come forward to the council for their approval. But, again, nothing has changed in their budget.
We'll go to Bill Wallace.
Yes, sir.
Pauline, in looking at the subsidies, and you might not have the answer for this, but how do we come up with the dollar amount between the two senior citizen centers, whereas Menloosa Han gets a larger amount than Canyon Lake? I, I just want to know the computations in coming to those numbers.
I am not familiar with why one gets more funding than the other through this process. I do know that the Menloosa Han Center, that is actually a city facility, and so we want to make sure that the maintenance on that facility is maintained in, in good order, and that may be part of the reason why additional funding goes there. I'm, but I'm quite, I'm not sure.
Okay. Does anybody know the answer?
I could probably, see if I can find out. You know, I'll, I'll contact Colleen if I have to, and see if she remembers why.
That discussion's going to come up, so it probably would be nice to know.
On the recap, if you could. Thank you.
Any other questions for Pauline? I take it that's none. Thank you, Pauline. Would you get the mayor, yeah?
So, did you get that, Ron, did you get that saying from the movie? And it was, "You can't handle..."
That's exactly what I was going to say. I know what it is, although you wouldn't have asked if it was. I don't know.
You tried to say so. This on tape?
I hope so.
There's a turpulation on the floor.
It is, I have my mic on right here.
Oh, yeah, there. Yep, I know, I'm looking for the line item. That's what we're looking at, council contingency.
Well, all of it. Mayor.
Oh, the whole budget, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you, when you said contingency. Okay.
Yeah, the contingency is included in there, but it's all of them together.
Yep. Mr. Kroger, I'm ready, if you are.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, very good. There again, bottom line, of course, we only have three FTEs in the entire department, so that one's pretty straightforward. If you look at the bottom line, the overall budget is actually being reduced by about 2.5 percent, or about $21,000. A couple other highlights in here, let me just pull through. Council contingency is the same dollar amount as what we had in 2010, so that was brought forward from, to 2011, so there's no change in that. Let's see here. There is some difference in travel. What I'm proposing is travel down to 22,000. And there again, what we try to do is, we try to look at the last actual numbers we have. Here's the last actual number we have, which is about 18,000. So, what we did is, we reduced it from 27,000 down to 22. I will tell you, if you haven't noticed, just about every budget, matter of fact, with the exception of the airport, took a hit on their travel. And most of it was somewhere between 10 and 20 percent. And so... And so I, I think it's only fair that, that we also step up to the plate. You can see, this is the council's travel. Down below here is the mayor's travel, which was just separated out. If you notice, in 2010, it's at $8,000. I don't believe that I'm gonna spend that much. Now, keep in mind, the mayor's travel can include a lot of different things. Usually, I try to go to DC a couple times a year to talk with our congressional delegation. I'm gonna try and cut that back a little bit, but there's other things, other responsibilities that, quite honestly, I haven't done in three years. And I probably start, need to start doing that, going on advocating for the city a little bit. But there again, I cut my own travel by $1,000 also. And there again, we'll take a look in 2012 budget, and if, if it can be cut, I'll cut it again. So with that, Pauline, anything else you want to point out? Everything else is pretty straightforward? Oh, yes, thank you. The other thing I want to bring your attention to is the salary line item. If you notice, overall, it's about static. It hasn't really changed much. But if you look at the salary at the top here, it's a reduction in the permanent salaries of about $12,000, along with benefits and overtime. But what we've done is, we've actually placed in about $15,000 for temporary. And the reason for that is, I will tell you, and if you haven't noticed, the staff in my office works extraordinarily long hours. It's sort of a running joke whether Trudy and I are gonna beat you, beat each other in. And we're usually in at 7:00 in the morning. And a lot of times, I actually have to escort Trudy out of the building at 7:00 at night when I'm leaving, because otherwise, she'd stay here and work until the work was done. I will tell you, in all the years, and I've been involved in city government for going on 14 years, we've never been as busy as we are right now, especially in the mayor's office. So what we're proposing to do is, there again, we're going to see a reduction, and that was with Kay's retirement. Kay was at the top of the pay scale, Trudy is not. And so we're gonna save about $12,000 plus some overtime, plus some benefits. And what we're asking is to allow us to put $15,000 in the temporary wages in an effort to try and get caught up. And our intention is, of course, Katie is gonna go back to school full-time at School of Mines. What we would like to do is be able to pull her back on a very part-time basis, maybe a couple days a week, and help not only the mayor's office, myself, but also the, the council, and get caught up in your requests. Because I will tell you, as, as hard as they try to get back to you with information on your request, I will tell you, if you go back in Trudy's office, she has probably two or three stacks of papers about two feet tall on different things that she, she's behind on. So what we're hoping to do is, is bring Katie back in on a temporary, non-benefited position, and help fill in when we need to get caught up during those times of year when we get behind. Budgetary process is a perfect example. This time of year, quite honestly, it's very difficult, because they'll come in at 7:00 in the morning, and they'll be working again tonight till 7:00 tonight. And Trudy is a straight salaried person. And the only person in city government that, in my mind, should be expected to work 60 to 70 hours as myself. I, I don't think it's fair to, to ask salaried people to put in 60, 70 hours a week. We're gonna burn them out. So anyway, that's why that's in there. With that, stand by for any questions.
Dave, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the mayor get benefits?
Yes.
Do you get retirement?
Oh, I thought you meant like benefits as far as like coming to things like this.
Well, this is just a plus.
The answer to that is yes. The mayor is a full-time position, so I am a benefited position.
So you could actually retire under the state?
I, I do get contributions in the state retirement program. I will tell you in all honesty, I don't think there's a mayor that gets a heck of a lot of retirement out of it because of the fact that realistically, to get much of a retirement, you're gonna end up having to put in for 20 years. And the longest-serving mayor of reps he's ever had is 12, and that was Art LaCroy. So although I actually pay into the state retirement program, it's not, it, it really doesn't account much, because there again, the city just matches as far as a percentage as far as what I, I contribute. And then there is options as a full-time benefit position. There is an optional retirement program that's 100% funded by employees, and I do contribute to that.
So what are the council members' benefits?
You know, I'm.
None? Okay.
Yep. By, yeah, by, yeah. By definition, you're non-benefited, because you're not considered a full-time employee.
But I work 60 or 70 hours a week.
Ron White, Mr. Ron White.
Thank you, Mr. Ron Kroger. I appreciate that. As you've noticed, I've kept my comments.
I notice I haven't heard he's.
That's because Gary's threatening you.
You guys can all thank Mr. Brown for that. He threatened me yesterday. I need him on my side. Since we're on the benefit thing, I think it would be, it'd be an important point now to explain how a match works, Mr. Mayor, so that the new council people can see what, like I say, an employee puts in, whatever, 6% gets matched one for one up to 6% or whatever that case may be.
Sure. And, you know, that's a great question, especially for those of you that are new. The one thing that Rapid City does have as far as being able to offer employees is, we have probably one of the best benefit packages in town. We may not always pay the most, but I, I would be hard-pressed to find someone that actually has a benefit package better than the city of Rapid City. With that, Pauline, you want to explain a little bit on our benefits?
Absolutely. The retirement is through the South Dakota Retirement System. We talked a little bit about this yesterday. For the mayor's position and non-safety positions, 6% is withheld from the employee's check, and also 6% is matched by the city. If it is a safety position, it's considered Class B, which then it's 8% withheld from the employees and 8% matching. As far as health insurance, the city pays 100% of the single premium. Anything that's not the single premium, we look at the total premium, deduct the single premiums, but the rest in half. The employee pays one of those halves, and then the city pays the single premium plus the other half. So depending on where you lie within the health insurance, the city picks up a, a portion of that, if not all of it. The dental insurance is all employee-paid. There is nothing contributed from the city. Group life insurance, the, the city has coverage on our employees for, I believe it's $35,000. And then there's lower, I think it's $5,000 for a spouse and $1,000 or $2,000 for kids, depending on what kind of policy that you have. There's also the benefits through the Parks and Rec program, depending on what kind of insurance coverage you have. If you have a single policy, the employee is eligible for. If you have a family policy, you're eligible to get a family pass. There's two different levels of passes. I believe one includes golf, one does not.
Talk about vision, because they were just talking about vision.
We are also looking at a vision program for the employees. Again, that would be much like our dental program, where it's all employee-paid. There will not be any cost other than a little bit of administrative time for that program. We currently have a survey out to our full-time benefitted employees to see if there's interest in that. If we can get at least 75 employees to say that they are interested in that, then we would be willing to go with that program. That is a policy that we have for HR, that we have to have 75 participants before we'll do apparel withholding for it. Otherwise, it, it's too time-consuming and to do it for a few.
Yep. The, the other thing to keep in mind when we're talking about insurance, the city of Rapid City does self-insure. That's a lot more cost-effective. And then, of course, we have basically a, a cap policy or major policy in case we have a, a major claim to cap our losses. And that's $100,000, if I'm not mistaken, on the health side? Jason, is $100,000 on the health? Or 150? I think it's 100.
It's $100,000. And it's probably also worth mentioning the, the short-term disability policy.
Our short-term disability, the employees earn both vacation time and sick leave time. The sick leave time is broken out into Sick A and Sick B. Sick A is if you have a sick kid for a day, or you need to go to dental appointment, that type of thing. Sick B is actually used for short-term disability. So if you have a note from your doctor, or if you have a medical issue where you are going to be gone for an extended period of time, you are eligible to use that Sick B policy. Also, in the end, when you, depending on your length of service with the city, if you have hours still accumulated within your sick leave, you are paid that out. It's, a portion of that is paid out at a portion of your salary at the time that you quit. And I don't have those exact figures for you, but that is also an additional benefit, because not all, not all employers will pay you for sick leave. They pay you for vacation, but that's it.
Yep. With that, any other questions? There again, over, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. What, what's the, what is the insurance deductible?
It is $350. Are you talking health insurance?
Correct.
300, I, $300, I'm sorry, for a single, and $600 for family. And I believe the max out-of-pocket is 1,500 for co-insurance. It's like 1,500, I think, is that. So the total that an employee will pay for a single is 1,800, for family is 3,600. Very good insurance.
I, I guess, you know, and, and I think it would be appropriate. I'll send you an email that I have a question that maybe we can just get all that information to the, to the new council members, so they understand when we're talking about wages and those types of things. And you start adding in the benefits and all those types of things, and what the, what the deductibles are. And, you know, our insurance guy over here clearly knows what that costs when you have a $350 deductible. But the other question I had, and maybe we could ask Tracy to, to do this for, for us, because is a mean, median, and average of, of the wages across the city? And then we can compare them to what, what the actual taxpayers are earning in our community versus what the city's earning in our community? So we have a, a benchmark. We always use these benchmarks that are outside the city. So if we had a mean income, a median income, and an average from the employees, you know?
Mayor. The, the only thing I would caution you about just a little bit is the fact that that works well with a lot of different positions. But you have to keep in mind, is the city does employ a number of very high-skilled employees, and that may skew it up and give the wrong impression that, that we're paying above market. We do Condry studies, and the Condry studies at this point, and we're right in the middle of union negotiations. I think we're left with fire. And what Condry studies have actually suggested is, we're at or below typically what market is. And so just a suggestion, maybe what you want to do is, is basically direct people to our website, because there again, one of the things that we've committed to collectively is having a transparent form of government. You can actually go online, if you go under HR, you can actually look at every single employee's salaries in the city. It is published, it's online. And the nice thing about that is, you can see basically, you know, if, if people want to look up what the mayor makes, or if the, if they want to look up what a council make, person makes, it's online. It's public information.
Mr. Kroger, I didn't mean to make this into a political football. I can handle that myself. Just strike that from the record, I'll go do the calculations myself. Thank you.
Any other questions on?
No political football. I guess from what I've seen from the Condry, I, I understand that. But what I've seen from the Condry also is, when we went into the five-year period on some people and the salaries that were paid, and then we couldn't turn it around, because we made promises, when it became a budget that was more losing than winning, it didn't work for us anymore. So you can base it on studies sometimes, which I appreciate, but it also commits us in a sense to, to doing what we say and say what we do in a time that it's not working anymore. I understand there's high-paying professional people, but there is in our community as well. So on a Condry study, I'm not all in favor of following something just because it's a study, or just because it's a Condry.
I'm a little, wait, I, we've had two evenings or two days of budget hearings. We've gone through every department.
Right.
Okay, we're now on the, the mayor and council's budget.
Right.
We're elected officials. The 10 of us here don't get any benefits at all. I'm trying to relate why we're talking about Condry studies and that type of stuff on the mayor and council budget.
Maybe, maybe because it has something to do with all of us in a sense of how we do our business as a mayor and council in that study, Kroger. And remember, we're doing these things with Condry's, and we're talking about it on the desk, whether it be us or the mayor. Let's take a factual approach at it, and if it's working or not. I'm sorry you're trying to stick to the schedule, but.
For, for the last two days, we've had a lot of leeway, and which way we've been going with a lot of stuff.
Right.
But right now, we are on the council and the mayor's budget. And the discussion we're having really, to me, does not relate to the, to the council and the mayor's budget. If we want to put the Condry study, or we want all that kind of stuff, and we want to discuss that when we sit down and go through the budget, I don't have a problem with that. But to spend 25 minutes tonight discussing the Condry study, and the means and medians, and all that kind of stuff, and arguing about salaries and stuff, when we're on Pacific mayor and council, I don't understand that.
Mr. Kroger, I'm, I'm understanding that, but then we do have a, at the end of this, other things we want to talk about, so we can talk about it at the end of this.
Yes.
On your, okay, so I appreciate that. That's all that we need to put it towards the end. Thank you, sir.
Bonnie.
On 4225, other professional services, like what kind of other professional services?
Go ahead, Pauline.
What kind of put under there?
It does, it does include a lot. I know the one that comes off the top of my head, there's $50,000 included in that line item for Lifeways. That takes up the majority of that.
Lifeways?
Lifeways. That's a program we co-op with the schools in the state on. If we need more, if we need more specifics, I'm either gonna have to refer to Tracy Davis or ask that we bring that back, where we can find out.
That one, there also includes Black Coast Council of Government.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Black Coast Council of Governments, which.
That's right around 30,000.
28,000?
829,000.
So between those two accounts were virtually everything in that line item.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question. With the Lifeways program, are, where is the funding for that? Is that being cut, increased, or is it staying the same?
At this point, it is staying, actually, it was cut, because we didn't know what the schools were doing. They're, they're in some discussions. Last I heard, they're actually having discussions going out to try and find additional matching funds. So we'll see where they're at.
Thank you.
I, I can't give you a definitive answer tonight, because I don't think they know where they're at.
Okay, sure.
They're struggling trying to find funding, because I, on the school side, I know that at one point, they're in, then they're out, and now they may be back in, but I don't, they haven't finalized their budget yet either.
And, and it's my understanding of the Lifeways is more of a community cooperation with the schools.
It does a lot of things. Drug-free kids, I think there's four or five different programs actually all, ASAP is in there. There's three or four different programs that are basically designed to actually help kids stay off of drugs and alcohol, basically stay in school. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a combination of advocacy and counseling is what it is. Team building.
Great.
Why in the mayor's budget?
Why in the mayor's budget? You know, that's where, that's where it started a number of years ago, that's where it was put. And, and keep in mind, this is actually mayor's slash council's budget. That's why you'll see not only salaries, but you'll also see the council contingency is actually in here. So this is actually our budget.
Thank you.
Further questions? Go on.
And I think this falls into the mayor and council budget. I do, I really do.
All right.
At one point in time, city council members did receive benefits.
Did?
Did. Would it be possible to find out what kind of benefits they were, and when they stopped, and/or why they stopped? And also, I think the county commissioners received benefits.
County commissioners do receive, I think they're eligible for insurance, and I believe they may be eligible for retirement. We'll check, I'm, and there again, I've been involved in city government for about 14 years, and it, it would have been before that, because as far as, as long as I can remember, we've, elected officials, other than the mayor, is a full-time position, has never received benefits, but we'll certainly check. I, Pauline, you know.
You know, we could bring, we could talk about it at the recap.
Yeah.
That's fine. Tracy, we'll put that on our list for information to gather.
Further questions on the mayor and council budget? Do we have any other entities?
I just want to basically point out what some of those are. One would be the Journey Museum.
325,000.
Same as that they've received for many years. We have the Animal Shelter, that's a contract with them. That again, is staying the same. We have the 2012 budgets. We have the 2012 budgets, those will not be completed until after the 2012 committee brings forth a recommendation. If that is after our deadline, we will have to go back and do a supplement for those. We also have the CIP budget included in here, but those you actually have already approved, the five-year plan for the CIP, that was done Monday night. And so, that is the budget that will be put into these schedules for you, when, before it comes to the ordinance process.
Say, Pauline, talk to, as far as the CIP, there's a holder, there's a placeholder as far as the dollar amount in there, correct?
I think that all that's in CIP right now is actually the bond amount, but like I said, CIP, they just adopted that five-year plan, so we can go with that. There's also the Point One Six budget, all that we typically budget for through the Point One Six is for the bond payments. And then, as projects come up that have been approved, we transfer the money to water or sewer, wherever that fund, that project is actually placed. We have the education loan, that's another benefit to our employees, we actually will loan them money for schooling at a one percent interest rate, they have twelve months to repay that. We have the PLNA fund, which, again, Rich Sagan talked about briefly. The RSVP fund, which I talked about briefly, repair and demolition, that is for any projects out there that it's, if there's something that we need to go back for, like code enforcement and take care of an issue, that's one of those things. Transportation Center is actually the Milo Barber Building, we are actually looking at possibly integrating that back into the general fund. It was originally set up because it was, it was not a city-run operation, but it was a city building. But, now that it's a city-run operation, we can pull that all under the general fund, so that way, we can eliminate one of those funds. And that would be the rest of the, what's considered the other cost centers or other entities.
Anybody have, Jordan?
I do not like these buttons. However, with the Journey Museum, I guess I am curious, we're at three hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that correct, for the Journey?
Yes, that is correct.
Is this designed to be a fully subsidized entity, or is this supposed to be generating some revenue on its own?
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
Originally, the concept, going back to nineteen ninety-five, when the 2012 projects were first proposed, and then the completion of the Journey Museum, I'm looking at someone here, but ninety-eight?
Somewhere around there.
I think it was ninety-eight, is when it was completed. The proposal, and this basically updates everybody, including myself and Ron Kroger, I believe. I mean, we, I don't think we were on the council at the time, but when it was completed. But, conceptually, it was supposed to be self-sustaining. The numbers that the consultants were pitching were right around three hundred thousand visitors a year. At that rate, it certainly would have been self-sustaining. The actual number of visitors that are actually going through it are about thirty-five thousand. And so, the Journey operated for a number of years, chewed up through their reserves, and ended up coming back to the city asking for an annual subsidy, very similar in their mind to what the DOL receives. And so, the dollar amount was set, I remember specifically the meeting, it was set at three hundred and twenty-five thousand. The thing that I have held the wine on with the Journey is the fact that my intention is to try and wean them off. At this point, we haven't been able to reduce it, but the thing you'll look at, it's never increased. And so, the buying power of that dollar, of course, has certainly gone down. And it would be my hope that eventually, they could start basically reducing that subsidy level, but at this point, we're just, they're going to have to start generating additional traffic, or, and I know there's been some discussions with the Journey as far as creating an endowment fund where they can start generating some interest income. But, all those things are still in the works, and at this point, they do not have the ability to be self-sustaining. The three hundred and twenty-five thousand basically keeps the doors open, keeps the lights on, and about what it does.
I would like to point out, in addition to what the mayor said, most of them, well, I shouldn't say most of it, they receive about a hundred and eighty-one thousand to manage the facility. The rest of it, again, like the DOL goes towards the maintenance and the utilities for that, for that facility, because it is a city-owned facility.
And if I may, there, that's exactly right. When we talk about the differences as far as how we have agreements with the DOL, you know, the Journey, the Journey's a lump sum. It's very straightforward, here's three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is your subsidy, you pay everything out of it. The DOL is a little bit different creature in the fact that we have a budget that we approve, but by agreement, when the DOL was built and donated to the city, there was an agreement that the city would always pay the utilities. So, that number on the DOL is always sort of a guesstimate based upon what the utilities are going to come in at. You know, if the utilities come in higher than what we're estimating, and there again, that was my argument of why I basically put additional funding into the utility line item. If you don't, if the utilities came in, then we actually have to go in and supplement that budget above their authorized budgetary levels, so.
With that, I guess I'd just like to make a very short comment, but it seems to me that the Journey did make a statement that they were going to be self-sustaining, they've not done that. Unfortunately, I think it's been over a period of time that, as the mayor pointed out, we've had a consistent amount, they've stayed on that. The DOL, on the other hand, has been able to run under the same amount while simultaneously expanding, or I'm sorry, a pretty...
The DOL, once they did their expansion, the dollar amount that we actually give to the DOL almost doubled.
Okay.
If you go back and, you don't pull up the DOL, just real quick, it went from about a hundred and five thousand dollars, I believe, prior to the expansion. Can you pull it up, go to the bottom line? There you go. If you look at the bottom line, it was a hundred and eight thousand dollars back in two thousand, prior to the expansion, up to what we actually paid in two thousand nine, which was two twenty-one. Now, that's a little bit inflated, because they had some other expenses that we covered. But, the eleven, two thousand and eleven budget is right around two hundred thousand, so they saw almost a hundred percent increase in their subsidy from the city.
Right, thank you, Mayor, for the correction. I guess I'm just concerned that it seems like we have one program that is doing quite well with what they're given, and another that, and has made improvements to actually reduce and make it more cost-effective. And I guess I just want to state that I'm concerned that another frankly does not seem to be working and cooperating with the city in that direction. Thank you.
Yep, one last comment. Absolutely fair comments, and quite honestly, probably pretty spot-on. Thing to keep in mind is, I dislike subsidies as much as anyone, but so much of what we do in the city, we subsidize everything from swimming pools to golf courses to you name it, we subsidize it, including the Civic Center, which, you know, quite honestly, gets three-quarters of the triple B tax. We do that for, to provide those services that the community would like, and sometimes literally demand of us, but you're exactly right, subsidies are always an issue, and the reason for this, it's an issue is the fact that you can always have some control over the budget, but when it comes to subsidies, the first time you try to cut five percent out of subsidy, it's like pulling teeth. I mean, Ranger Band comes to mind. And some of you on the council will understand when I say Ranger Band, there's no promise or commitment, but every year they come in, and there's an expectation, I think they get twenty-one thousand dollars every year, and if, by God, if they don't get it, they'll march on us. Sorry.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. I'll try to keep my questions simple and straightforward, but if I can't be held accountable, I won't be held accountable if somebody responds upon my interpretations.
(laughing).
And sure.
The question I have is, at what point, is this a contract that's written, Mr. Mayor, with the city that says the city has to provide three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the DOL?
With the Journey, the answer is no.
To the Journey, I'm sorry. So, this is not a contract, because the rest of the budgets have been cut, I think on average, I think you said around five to seven percent?
About five percent.
But, the subsidies here have taken no hits at all. I know that Jerry Cole was up here earlier talking about what they did with La Croix Links earlier, at some point, there has to be a realization come, some sort of realization come to see where that fine line is, you'd mentioned of what the private sector wants, and what they're willing to pay for. If we're losing, if this is losing three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and it's never going to get weaned off, because it's straight across the board, and all the actuals are the same year after year after year, at what point do we look and say, well, maybe this is a losing proposition, and find another avenue of funding? Or, some of my council members have said, in the face of adversity, it's amazing what people can do. But, the rest of the taxpayers are taking hits, the fire department, I believe, took a hit, the police department took a hit, the parks department took a hit, Public Works take a big hit, and I've noticed that, at least this subsidy, there's no hit. And I have, you know, I have some concerns about that in understanding that, yep, there is some requirements from their citizens, but I believe, and the priorities that I'm gathering are public safety, and roads and streets and infrastructures. And so, I will have some further questions on this one moving forward. Thank you.
I'll keep it very brief. Fair comments, absolutely fair comments. Thing to keep in mind is, a lot of the subsidies, including the Journey, have not received the benefit of getting increases like some of our other departments have over a number of years. Now, keep in mind, we're into our third year of a flat budget, that's true, but prior to that, they were getting anywhere from three to five percent bump for a number of years. These subsidies haven't moved. The other thing to keep in mind, and just to put on your radar, what Alderman, Wyffenbach said is absolutely true, but the same argument can be made for everything we subsidize, including a half million dollars that we subsidize for our pools. You know, so, just keep that in mind, and I'm not advocating one subsidy or the other, just keep in mind that there are certain segments of the population that support certain functions. Some people absolutely support the Journey, don't support the pools, other people support the pools, not the Journey.
Sam.
I think it would be wise to ask the Journey to give us a presentation at the recap. We used to get presentations from them, and I think it's, it would be good to have them in the room and tell us their vision. And, I'll wait.
And a suggestion, if there's anyone else, any of the other departments that didn't present, I think that's an excellent idea. If there's any other subsidies or other budgets that didn't present, I think you can ask them to do a presentation in the recap.
We'll go to Bonnie.
Thank you. Yes, that was a question I was wanting to ask them, if they're trending, you know, are they improving?
The subsidies or the Journey?
The Journey.
The numbers...
Are they trending where they're getting better? But, we can wait for their presentation.
We can wait, but I can answer that very shortly. Their numbers are on the rise. I did just see an attendance that showed over the last four or five years, that they're up about four or five percent for the year.
Okay. And my other question, probably, Pauline, is their electricity, they're not showing much, you know, just a thousand dollars, I think, more, so I'm just wanting to make sure that didn't escape you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Debbie Hockeck.
I guess, when I've always talked to our ex-finance officer, I asked him the hard question, where would you cut if you had to cut, and it would be in subsidies? And he said you'd have to have the political will to go in and cut subsidies, because that's where, if you cut anything, you would probably cut. So, I would ask if some of these, the subsidies that are not contracted, what are those subsidies? And if they had the same cut as what we're giving everybody else, what would that end up cutting? And how much would that save the city, or what we could put towards the fire department or people that, in that extra money, based on priority, could use that money? Not that they are not as important in one sense, but if other people have to take that cut, and we are hearing from that it's a priority and that's where they'd cut, then I think it's important. So, I guess that would be my question, if we could have that answer whenever we go through the final recap, I would appreciate it.
Probably less than a hundred thousand.
Mayor?
You figure that, if you add up all the subsidies, so you're probably close to a million dollars. And I'm talking about the two hundred thousand dollar subsidy line item, you're talking about what we have for the Journey, you take what you have with economic development and chamber and so forth, and just for round numbers, you use a million dollars. Well, we cut across the board five percent, five percent of, you know, of a million dollars, what is that? Fifty thousand dollars.
I guess I'd just like to see that number. Thank you.
Jordan.
I'll try and keep this very short, but just a quick comment. Deb mentioned something that I think is important about political will, and I think it's fair to say that currently, with, at a national level, the report coming out that our GDP's down one point five percent, that's going to affect our dollar amount, and the mayor touched on that, that our dollar doesn't retain its value always. I believe in the system of meritocracy, and I guess one of the things he mentioned is, as this goes on, up four to five percent in the increased numbers, maybe we could look at a proportional decrease based on the past ten years, so it is proportional, so we're not cutting the legs out from under them, but using the discrepancy between those numbers to fund some of the electricity costs for some of the other things, and also look at funding some of the other programs that we have put on the recap, and I would just like to put that on the table for the recap for discussion. Thank you.
You didn't get that, Tracy, okay.
Yeah, meritocracy. Just to define that, that means that I believe you reward someone for their merits, so if they're doing well, you don't, you know, hurt them, but in this situation, I think we're not trying to cut the legs out from under them, but maybe we should look at a proportional decrease based on their increase, so we continue the funding. And also subsequently, try and spread those funds around to the other agencies throughout the community.
Jordan, I think you need to look at Tracy and explain that to her, because she's got to bring that forward.
She's shaking her head.
You got that?
Oh, can I?
Not to cut the legs out of your knee, Jordan.
Bonnie?
Does Journey have some kind of partnership or anything with, like Coca-Cola, or some kind of branding policy, or?
They do not have any, or they do, well, let me rephrase that.
Partnerships or anything like that?
They try, they have gotten some sponsorship money for naming rights, the gallery's named, the theater is named, and so forth, but as far as ongoing corporate sponsors, the answer is no.
Okay, I think we've got to get Harley Davidson involved for the rally.
Further, any other questions? Pauline, I think, let's go into a recap, and then discussion after the recap, because we can have a discussion, then do a recap, and have more discussion, so let's do it, let's do a recap first.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to point out what we need to do from here. We will need to set another hearing for the recap for the information that you guys have requested. It will take a little bit of time to accumulate that from the different departments. We're hoping to get the email out tomorrow with the deadline of having it back to us by, I would say, the end of next week. So, keep that in mind when you set the next hearing date. The other thing that you need to keep in mind is, we do have to have two readings of the appropriation ordinance, and it has to be approved by the council, so that I can get our property tax request to the county auditor's office by October one. She likes it earlier, but I have to have it there no later than September thirtieth. Therefore, the schedule of that would be, it would go to legal and finance for first reading on September first, to the city council meeting then, on September seventh for first reading, then September fifteenth to legal and finance again for the second reading, and I believe it is September twentieth for second reading at council, whatever that Monday is. So, we need to keep those dates in mind when we schedule meetings and that type of thing. I would like to have Tracy go through the questions that she has from yesterday, if that's okay? Just to make sure that we have them.
Okay, so first, from the airport, you're looking for the two thousand nine and two thousand and ten year-to-date travel expenditures. You want an update on the FTEs that was included in line fifteen for each department, not by cost center. A breakdown of any changes over twenty-five percent up or down, along with any reasons for those changes, that applies to all departments. A summary of the turnback percentage by department for the last few years. Also, for the airport, you want the two thousand nine actual revenues, twenty-ten year-to-date revenues, and twenty-eleven projected revenue. There was a previously written opinion that Jason will look for regarding the city attorney's office function. Interdepartmental charges spreadsheet listing the breakdown between all the departments. The calculation of revenue at the Civic Center that is received from groups such as the Black Hills Symphony, who also received money from the city. groups such as the Black Hills Symphony, who also received money from the city. The percentage or number of small events that are held at the Civic Center, this would be for organizations such as like the Quilting Club or something, small, not large corporations. The number of nights a year the Civic Center Theater is empty. From Public Works, a summary of equipment purchases that were cut and the life of the equipment that is not being purchased. From the Street Department budget, a five-year history of the repair and maintenance category 4250. 2010 year-to-date expenditures for all departments. From water, the construction plan schedules for Jackson Springs and Mountain View Water Treatment Plants. From solid waste, the 2009 and, excuse me, 2008 and 9 actual revenues and the 2010 year-to-date revenue, and then a number and/or tonnage of covered alternative loads for the past five years at the landfill.
Do you remember, was that all of them from last night?
Bonnie, go ahead.
He was gonna, yeah, what, days? They were empty, you know, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, whatever. And then also on the street repairs, did we, was it, did we want more than just that 4250 line? Because wasn't that just the materials, like the concrete, or didn't we want more than just that one category? Sam, do you remember on the street repairs, that 4250? Because wasn't that just the?
Okay.
Yeah, it was kind of whatever involves street repairs, because I think 4250, he said, was like things that got broken and they, and so I think we want more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. You've mentioned FTEs per department, is that correct? Okay. Will this be emailed to everybody and then?
Yeah, everybody should have wrote how they wanted, everybody had the option last night of how they got this, this information to them. Mayor?
One quick question. On the year-to-date, do you want that through the 1st of July, or do you want it basically year-to-date? Because if, if you go seven months, it's gonna be hard to try and look at 50%.
I said six months.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just heard year-to-date. Very good.
Is, is there anything else that, that anyone wants information on?
We, we were talking about, like the Journey, if they could bring forward their vision, was that included in that? And were they, did we ever come to a conclusion on that? Was? And then someone asked about all the subsidies, which ones?
Tracy, do you have, do you want to read tonight's list that you got? Can you read that?
Before you do, Ron, I think on that year-to-date, one of the things that we discussed last night was not to just be a snapshot of 2010 year-to-date, but also to see where it compares these year-to-dates on a couple of previous years. Doesn't do us any good to see where we are up to this point this year, and assume half of 2009 or half of 2007, when in fact, our spending patterns may not be the same.
Right.
How many years back? That's what Tracy's question was.
Just, I'd say two, 2008 and 2009. Because that's the numbers we're using up there, so.
Okay, this, now this is the list from tonight.
From tonight. We will provide the estimate sheet from Mr. Keck at Black Hills Power. Also, not that any information is going to be provided, but the travel and training for the fire department, that'll be put on a review list as requested. From the ambulance service, they will be providing a history of the delinquency rate. From Parks and Recreation, there will be a spreadsheet basically of the per round, per girl for subsidy for golf, ice, and swimming. La Croix Water, La Croix Golf, the water before the takeover and after with the YMCA. Jerry Cole will bring the agreement that's with Black Hills Workshop and discussion on temporary wages and using partnerships to possibly take care of some of those. The subsidy between, what is the, how the calculation is figured for Canyon Lake Senior Center and Minna Lusahan Senior Center, there will be benefit information that was provided. Information regarding city council members previously receiving benefits, what they were, when, and why they were stopped, and the Journey will make a presentation. And then Mason's item, which I'm gonna ask you a little bit more clarification before you go, so, okay.
Okay, anything else that needs to be on there? All right, so we'll have this information by?
The end of next week.
The end of next week, yeah. I'd like to set a tentative, if it's the end of next week. Okay, I'm, actually, I'm gonna throw one out right now, though, as a tentative, and we'll send it out and see if it works, but if, if we're not gonna have this information until next week, I'm, the 23rd is a Monday, and it's an off Monday from the council? Will the 23rd work?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can work on that time, but...
Can I clarify that we are going to request that they get the information back to us by the end of next week, and then we will compile it all together and get it into a PDF so that we could have it to you guys the following week.
Okay, so then the 23rd would be a good time, then, if that, so tentatively, it'll be the 23rd at, say, 5 o'clock. That's, that's what we'll work for. If not, can we have motion to adjourn? All favor say aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Those opposed?
It's a pleasure.
We're adjourned.